Okay, call to order, will the township clerk please read the statement?
This meeting of the, I'm sorry, reading the wrong paper. Adequate notice that this special meeting has been provided to the public and the press on November 11, 2021, and was posted on the bulletin board in the Misswood Building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10, semicolon, four dash seven. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the November 8, 2021 scheduled township meeting that was canceled due to technical difficulties. Action will be taken.
Thank you, Marcy, roll call please.
Vice President Orburger.
Here.
Councilmember Chili. Councilmember Fury.
Here.
Councilmember Pitsker.
Here.
Council President Shortway.
Present, just for the record, councilperson Chili has texted me, she's just stuck in traffic, she should be here in the next 10 minutes or so. Okay, invite everybody to stand and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, public comments for current agenda, all items only, limited to three minutes per person. Anyone desiring to speak, please state your name for the record and the area in town, of town where you reside. May I have a motion to open the floor for public comments?
I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor, aye. Anybody care to speak? I would think, since we are talking about that under discussion, yes.
Good afternoon, I live in Glenwood Estates. I was here when Dan Kraus, a town council, brought me about 7513C, real pump track in town, looking for the town to possibly donate some land to do it. And I know this project is more a long way from when that originally happened. But what's this going on, I haven't had a lot to say about it, lately I posted some things on social media. I'm not happy with the way this is going on. I think that the town council is trying to rush this project through, and it's really not just ignored the public, but have ignored the contract. The contract says that Spon would be responsible, this is based on a hundred-page contract that I've tried to read through multiple times, to be responsible for clearing, soil prep, grading, course buildup, stone, base, and asphalt. There was supposed to have been a public input meeting, which is why it's item 1.4, and there was supposed to have been a second public input meeting, item number 1.6, to solicit community feedback and decide on the ultimate design based on those two meetings. To my knowledge, those meetings never happened. And finally, well not finally, but the construction period was supposed to have been from 10:04 to 11:04, and it was supposed to be done by then, by contract. I know there was a bond taken out, I didn't read anything in there that said what the penalties would be for not completing the project that time. It seems apparent that DPW has been working on this project completely outside of the terms of the contract. Our DPW should not have been doing this work. I was told by one council member that they weren't doing it, and then it came back initiative correction saying that in fact they were doing it. Now I understand that there was a soil conservation issue where they were supposed to draw permit 48 hours before they ever broke ground. And now I found out that they just got that on the 10th of November, long after the work had started. If people go to the state or county or the soil conservation group and complain, and it ends up costing a fine, or litigation, we'll end up, the taxpayers will end up paying money for that. And then I'm afraid council members will start saying, well, look at what the community has done now, they're costing us more money by frivolous complaints. I don't think any of it's frivolous, I think that this board has acted in a very improper manner. I've had one council member tell me, well, it's not really our project, it's the, it's the responsibility of Corey, but you guys have oversight. I think that voters, I really didn't think people were paying attention. But after the election, kind of came to mind that, yeah, people are paying attention. And I didn't like the way this was done. And I've come to this council before, and I've raised issues, and people set stone face, never have answers for anything. I know it's not a question and answer period, but there's got to be some dialogue, and there's got to be some give and take. And when people come before the council with complaints and concerns, they should be addressed. And I just don't feel they happen. And I'm sure we're coming up on my three minutes. So I think that's about it. I am frustrated, I'm not happy with the way this has been done. I think the council is acting in a very, very poor manner. And I think that's why some of you won't be here, come the first of the year. And there's at least one that I wish would still be here. This is not the way things were supposed to be done, and I hope the new council will hear the complaints of citizens and try to act in a better manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Can we speak? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have some prepared remarks that I'd like to read. Some of you know me already, however, as a matter of introduction, for those who do not, my name is Kirk Stevens. I'm a farmer living on San Tiel Road, one of the last in town. My family has been farming and burning continuously since the 1700s. I'm here today because you will all be voting on 12 appropriations that pertain to my family, listed under my mother's maiden name of Walker. I recognize that the voting today is more or less a formality, and that I don't need to be here and make these statements, that are data legal settlements required to be out regardless. Nonetheless, I feel compelled to tell my story and to try and obtain some closure on what is a upsetting chapter in my life. I ask that those listening to this meeting online, on the internet, be respectful of my wishes and not debate this on social media. I also respectfully ask that the council allow me to finish my remarks and not cut me off a predetermined time limit. I'm taking time off to a busy work schedule to be here. I'll try and be as succinct as possible, however, I feel that this story is important for you all to hear. It's a commonly held observation that young people leave our more rural communities for the opportunities offered at cities. I'm one of the few that went in the opposite direction. I was working in the city, and after my grandfather's death, decided to move to Vernon to continue the family farming legacy. This came at great personal cost and sacrifice. I would have thought that the township of Vernon would have been happy for this decision, and the accompanying investment in the community that it brought, particularly at a time when foreclosures were widespread and there was much flight. What I was instead confronted with can be described as no less than a nightmare. It all started when I began to scrutinize the expenses of the farm. Faced with the overwhelming task of breathing life back into the property, I needed to be as efficient as possible with every dollar. One of the larger expenditures was my quarterly tax payment. I knew that New Jersey had high property taxes, but I also understood that farmers were supposed to be taxed according to lower farm values. Actually, I had an internship in high school, I worked for a municipal receiver of taxes, so I learned about taxation at a young age. Anyway, to make sure that everything was being done correctly from an assessment perspective, I hired a professional to help me fill out the annual paperwork that farmers submit to the assessor. We quickly realized that there are some issues with how we're being assessed. Far from getting a break, I seem to be paying more than most. For all intents and purposes, the paperwork that's getting submitted every year seemed to be ignored. The more we investigated, the more issues we uncovered. For example, a barn was mistakenly being taxed as a house. The assessment on that alone is over $240,000. Today, it's thankfully $10,000. An undeveloped woodlot was being charged as a residential lot and assessed at $250,000, while all the neighboring woodlots were being charged at only a few thousand. Even my process that were being taxed at the more beneficial farm assessment rate. Confused woodland as cropland and pastureland as cropland. These distinctions, while perhaps ambiguous to the layperson and are significant and can move the assessment by upwards of 500%. Going even deeper, farmland in New Jersey is supposed to be taxed according to how good the soils are, or how productive they are. Hills and wetlands in Vernon are not easy to farm. These factors are not taken into consideration as required by the state. We were eventually forced into selling off some of our land to just stop the bleeding and save on taxes. These issues could have been addressed pretty easily with tax credit corrections. I tried to resolve them directly with the assessor's office, with the assistance of professionals. Unfortunately, my inquiries into these matters were met with misinformation, dismissiveness, and even intimidation. I was told things such as, if you're not happy with the taxes, then don't farm here. Growing grass isn't farming, go grow some corn or something. I haven't seen cows on your property, and I don't believe that you're really farming. When I offered to give it to her, I was turned down without explanation. Be happy we let you be here at all, and I have the power to revoke your farmland assessment, stop causing trouble. These statements were highly offensive to me, to put it mildly. However, I persevered and continued to press the matter over many years, eventually involving the New Jersey State Department of Agriculture and other entities. I won the most blatant of these early appeals. However, in retaliation, the assessor at the time increased my residential taxes with complaints that I filed against her, essentially netting me back to an unreasonable overall assessment level. Mind you, this is for a 150-year-old house that had no functioning plumbing, limited electricity, failing roof and foundation. From that point forward, we graduated from county to state tax court and got more lawyers involved. This dragged on for years and years and years more. The assessor's personal vendetta was allowed to go unchecked. The hired professionals who were charged with helping her to navigate a complex landscape and administrative burden failed to rein her in, happy to collect their billable hours, not acting in the best interest of our taxpayers. All of this stopped when the new tax assessor joined the township. She was startled by the assessment and told me straight to my face that I was being screwed. What tens of thousands of dollars and a decade of litigation couldn't fix, she quickly worked through. She opened up the lines of communication and offered reasonable compromises. And thus, we have the settlement before us here today. Now, don't mistake me, this is not a happy ending. This settlement is pennies on the dollar. My grandfather, a veteran, and from a long line of veterans going all the way back to the Revolutionary War, was squeezed by these taxes and died impoverished because of them. Others in the county and in the community, lacking perhaps the education or the resources or the will to fight, were and are being taken advantage of as well, unable to cope with these stall tactics routinely employed. I'm extremely angry that a few bad apples could create so much harm and that a system of checks and balances did not function as they should have. Our town spends millions of dollars on discretionary amenities while many of its residents go cold and hungry. This episode has shaken my faith in our system of government, one that my family has fought and died for over the centuries. I'm asking you all to look into this matter, investigate why the town's tax attorney and appraisers allowed this situation to occur. They will likely whitewash this to you. I'm also asking you all to be conscientious of how fragile the farming community is, not only in Sussex County, but nationwide. The vast majority of farmers in the United States, according to this most recent census, lose money every year and must keep a second job to keep their farms going to feed us all. How would you like paying taxes that exceed your actual income, essentially having your wealth seized? Conscious that I've gone over my allotted time, I'm happy to make myself available to discuss this matter further offline. It's just one additional favor, I ask that you look into the town own parcels along San Tiel Road, continuous with our farm. I'm interested to purchase these as grassland for my cattle. They are not included in the upcoming land auction, and I do have a note out to Chuck and I remain informed about it. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirk. Haven't already, Marcy, just make sure we have on the record that Tony's here, I'm sure he did, but I didn't want to interrupt either speaker. Anybody else wishing to talk, speak? Mr. Rizzuto?
Yes, regarding the contract, Mr. Dunlop brought up, the first, may I introduce myself, right, Mr. Rizzuto, living in Glenwood Estates. Mr. Dunlop brought up the issue of the pump track and the letter received from the Soil Conservation District dated November 10th. The letter stated that before construction started, and it was in full print, for any construction started, there was to be 48-hour notification given to the conservation. Know for a fact that construction started well prior to November 10th. So obviously, that couldn't be, couldn't have happened. Is there any reason why the letter was, or actually, the timeline, it probably would have had to have associated with the Soil Conservation District?
Mr. Rizzuto, this is one of the reasons we have the item, I didn't even know these, this issue was in effect till literally a half hour before this meeting. So I can't answer the question, but I'm sure the administration will during our discussion.
Well, at some point, there has to be some, as Mr. Dunlop mentioned, the responsibility of oversight falls to the council, to subordinates. So at some point, I would think that that should be addressed, because there is the possibility of penalty if you can't talk the situation down. And if you can't talk the situation down, is it going to be a question of who is responsible and who's going to pay? Now also, there was the question of a performance bond. Construction on the site was started well in advance of the time as noted previously, but back to the conservation district. But more than that, it was ongoing well past the date that was specified in the contract, of I believe, November 6th. Now, if in fact, construction was still ongoing November 6th, and your performance bond was, wasn't completed, are you going to call your bond for penalty and recoup there? Or in fact, is your performance bond even valid in view of the fact that you had township workers and equipment on site doing that particular grading and site preparation? And does that activity validate the performance bond? Does it give the contractor basically a way out?
I have no answer, wasn't aware of the situation, not prepared to answer, but perhaps the administration or the engineer.
Were you aware of the fact that there was an ongoing construction prior, you know, in October? And that the construction continued on past the completion date? And that the contract specifications called for completion on November 6th?
Mr. Rizzuto, you and I have had these similar discussions before, it's up to the administration. When it's brought for the council, our main duty, duty is to advise and consent. So no, am I overlooking, micromanaging the mayor? Absolutely not.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Can I just add one thing?
Oh, wow, go ahead.
My understanding is, and it may not be true, is that the reason the town went to get the conservation authorization was because of an open request that was issued to the town, asking for such documentation a couple of weeks ago, which is what prompted them to go seek the certification after the fact. If you weren't aware of it, you said you just spun off 30 minutes ago, this is my understanding. Is this case about it, the reason that they went to ask for it was because of an open request seeking the documentation? Is the mayor's responsible, let the mayor answer the question, somebody needs to answer the question.
I'm hoping during our discussion, let's on the agenda, few minutes, hopefully you get those answers that you're looking for. Anyone else?
I have a couple online.
Emails are online?
I have Ms. Peg Distasi. Ms. Distasi?
Peg Distasi from Glenwood. I wanted to speak to a couple of items, mainly. The biggest thing that's concerning me is that we recently had Mike Fury appointed to the council. Last week, he made two comments. One stating that the work being done by the public, by the DPW workers was in fact being done for the MUA and soy and sewer work on the, on the site. Then, very next day, he withdrew that comment and said he was erroneous in that it wasn't. My concern with this is that, is this the way you're going to represent us, Mr. Fury? Making comments and then withdrawing them because you know that people found out what you're saying is not true? I'm very, very disappointed that in not even the first month, you've already misrepresented your position on the town council. The second thing that I would like to point out is, Mr. Shortway, this is your baby. You expect us, the public, to think that you don't know what's going on with your pump track? I find that very, very hard to believe. I think you knew about it, you knew that they were breaking the law, you knew that no permit had been found, applied for, and all of you have been handed your exit cards, because we, the people in this town, are tired of being lied to, tired of being misled. And mayor, you can call us mentally incompetent and every other thing you want to say. But the truth of the matter is, because we have the guts to stand up and point out the misrepresentation that's been going on by this council and you, we are labeled, and that has created a situation where we are all being attacked on public, on social media, being called horrible names and being told we're horrible people because we do our due diligence. We follow what you say and do, and we uncover what's the truth. You've been misleading people about this pump track and trail system for three years. And it's time, January, it's gonna end. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Soski. Marcy, next?
Yes, I have Jessica Palladini. Palladini?
Yes, thank you. My comments are also about the bicycle pump track. And I'm very happy to see that you are relaxing your rules about the number of minutes that people can speak, since you allowed Kirk Stevens eight minutes, which I have no problem with, but I'm hoping that you are also going to afford me the same amount of time if I go over a little bit, either now or at the end of the meeting. So my comments are about the bicycle pump track. What nonsense to say that you found out anything just 30 minutes before this meeting. I don't know how stupid you think we actually are. What you have done is completely illegal. And Mayor Burrell, this is entirely your doing, although I believe that Harry Shortway leads you by the nose. But you choose the site, you sign the contracts, and you are acting entirely lawlessly. In addition to the violation of the contract with Spon Ranch, doing the clearing, soil prep and grading, and having the DPW do it at additional expense to taxpayers for labor, including overtime and equipment rental. Now we learned today that you did it completely illegally and without approval from Sussex County Soil Conservation District. The letter from Soil Conservation is dated November 10th. You were done with what you were doing in the same week as the election, and we know why you did it as well. Spon Ranch had not even started the project, which according to the contract was supposed to be done by November 5th. Therefore, either you or they breached the contract, and this project should be put entirely on hold until January 1st. I would also like to know whether the town will be getting a credit or refund from Spon Ranch for the DPW doing the grading and soil prep that Spon Ranch was supposed to do. As for Sussex County Soil Conservation approval, and I do think that what Mike Fury said about it being work for the MUA is, is just reprehensible and deplorable. To think that the chairman of the MUA didn't even know what was going on is, again, I don't know how stupid you think we are. But Sussex County Soil Conservation District Secretary Eileen Gresen informed me today and confirmed, confirmed that you indeed violated soil conservation laws, and you never even notified them that you were starting the project. The bottom of the permit that you got, which again, you did not even get until November 10th, after you had finished the grading and the soil prep, clearly states, formal written notification at least 48 hours prior to commencing, any soil disturbance on this project is required. You never notified them of anything, you just clearly violated the law. I even went so far as to ask Eileen Gresen, do other municipalities violate the law like this and act lawlessly? And her answer was no. Now, neither Joshua Zalinski, our town attorney, nor engineer Corey Stoner, said or did anything about this lawlessness. That's your license on the line, Mr. Stoner. And you have more than once, more than twice, more than three times compromised that in this town. Not to mention the position you put the DPW in for violating state laws. This is just total lawlessness, shameful lawlessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palladini. Marcy, anybody else?
Yes, I have Zoe Heath.
Okay.
I actually did not mean to raise my hand earlier, I apologize, so I'm good, no comments from me.
Thank you, Zoe.
I have Walter Marsico.
Okay.
Mr. Marcy?
Yes, Walter Marsico, I would just like to say something regards to this whole pump track fiasco, because this goes right along the lines with what I've been dealing with. I'd like to read something that was sent to me. I'm sure Mr. Zalinski would know a lot about this, as well as you, Mr. Shortway. The township presented evidence to indicate that if the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one notice and order and penalty was to be sustained by the board, a fifty-six thousand dollar fine is warranted in connection with the violation at issue. Well, we all know this was a bogus violation conjured up by Mr. Westenberg that somehow disappeared. But I got to thinking now, what do you think would be an appropriate fine for the township? Mainly you, Mayor, Mr. Shortway. I'm thinking somewhere along the lines of seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand. Where on earth do you think you can get away doing whatever you want, but coming after good, honest citizens? Like myself, for example, a fifty-six thousand dollar fine? Can you even say that? Do you think that even makes any sense? But you go ahead and you do what you want with soil permits, not obtaining them, posting pictures on your social media site with no silt fence, erosion control. But you come after people like me to take care of those things. Where are yours, Mr. Shortway? Who posted the pic? Can you answer that or do you need more time to think about it? I'll give you some time. Anything? Mr. Mayor?
Three minutes. If you have, if you have an issue, address the whole council, period.
I'll address who I want to address. You don't make that determination. I don't know why.
Let me know when the three minutes are up, please.
Anything? Didn't expect it. How about you, Mr. Mayor, anything? No. Fifty-six thousand dollar fine is warranted, but you guys can do whatever you feel necessary without permits, letters, an LOI from the DP, nothing? Got it. Duly noted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Marsico. Marcy, anyone else?
I have S. Bar, Bar Guerello?
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, I was muted. Stephanie Zecarolo, Barry Leaks. I would just like to say, what I heard, I agree with all of it because I'm beyond disgusted with the way this council has handled this pump track. I have obtained a lot of information. I have called directly, I've been lied to, I've had different answers depending on the question. I have proof that I will present when necessary to show that we have been lied to by you, Mayor Shortway, and by our mayor. For you to cut off Walter like you just did, after what you did with our COVID money without our say, what you did with this pump track without our say, with the money spent on the rental equipment from Foley Equipment Rentals, the DPW, I'm glad they got overtime. They probably well deserved it, but not for that, not for your baby. And don't say you didn't know about that letter until a half hour ago, Mr. Shortway. I don't believe you. No one believes you. And the people that voted proved that on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other hands up.
Any emails?
Not, not for this.
Okay, since no one else desires to speak, can I motion?
I'm sorry, can I, somebody just raise their?
Okay, sure.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, hi. I just, I just joined the meeting a bit ago. Is this the public comments section or am I too early?
This is public comments for agenda items only. And then we'll have another session at the end of the meeting for any issue you desire to address.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll raise my hand then, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Since no other person desires to speak, can I have a motion to close? Public commenting.
Make a motion.
Second best.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, let's move on to item number six, items for discussion. We'll start with twenty twenty-one Best Practices Inventory. I'd just like to ask the council, has everyone read the email on the best practices we got?
Yes.
I guess it was about two weeks ago. Are there any questions for the administration concerning?
I had one question, Chuck, which we actually discussed before, but has every department reviewed these comments and are aware of everything?
I think Dianne could answer that, but I think she's distributed it.
Hi, I'm on. Right, so the best practices inventory is filled out by the chief financial officer, the administrator. And then if there's any questions that we have about specific items, they're usually the the unnumbered ones, like the ones that you don't get points for. I would usually reach out to the departments responsible for that. So I did reach out to land use for a couple of questions. I did reach out to the DPW director and I did reach out to the tax collector. So those would be the individuals who have put input on this.
Okay, and then how are those records handled after that input is brought to, brought forward to you?
How are the, I'm sorry, how are the records handled?
Yeah, yeah, how are the records handled for the, are they documented into this file?
So they, well, I mean, I received answers from them and then I, I, you know, answered the questions through FAST, which is the portal that we're required to answer through to the state.
Okay. That's all my questions.
I have a question. Dianne, what's the overall purpose of the inventory?
That's a good question. So the best practices inventory was created by the state as a way to kind of monitor what the best practices are and what we should be following as municipality. They, as you can see in the inventory, they give points for each, for a number of those questions. And it's, they've stated that it's their way of determining if you're going to get one hundred percent of your state aid or a reduced amount, you know, if you don't follow some, you know, enough of those best practices. So we are within that hundred percent state aid category, so that is a positive thing. So we are following, you know, to our best ability, the best practices that have been set forth by the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions concerned for the administration? Mayor or Chuck, do you have anything else or Danelle that you'd like to add?
No, just that everybody knows the best practices is, was already submitted to the state. They had a deadline earlier this month. And this is just, you know, open for discussion. If anyone wanted, obviously, a copy of the best practices, it is available.
The council president, I'd just like to it's something that we put a lot of focus on. We want to make sure that we qualify all of the state aid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since there are another, other, no other discussion or issues, let's move on to the status update of the pump track. If you desire, please tie in the town center trail, Mr. Mayor, whoever you want to designate. If we could get a update on what's going on here, I appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to start just by giving a summary update, please. As I previously said, on the bus, bicycle pump track is bike track without a doubt. Will I doubt be one more amenity that will make Burnham a more enjoyable and recreational county in which to live? And it will number two in highest burn status as the premier four seasons municipality in Northwest New Jersey, in which individuals can endure a host of outdoor activities. You know, while all of these, while both of these things are true, the motivating factor for me is that this special amenity is an investment in our town center area that will serve as a magnet to attract a host of individuals to our town center area, which enterprise business owners will view as potential new customers. And that these potentially new customers will be a motivating factor for those enterprise business owners to develop new businesses in our town center. That's the key factor. The following are six summary update points which reveal where we stand at this time moving forward with this investment. Number one, the award-winning design and build firm Spohn Ranch that has earned a contract from our town to build this investment in our town center. They actually started their work on the pump track on Monday, level eight, level eight. Within these first six days, Spohn Ranch's progress includes having used the all things millings that originated from our town, who had paved the project, to form out the formation of the pump track. You go there now, you'll see that's already done. Other works such as putting down the asphalt and installing the pump track train for the area will be constructed as well on weather permits. We thought we'd be a little farther along at this point in time, but the rain and other kind of weather has kind of prevented that. Putting down asphalt are below certain temperatures, it's not necessarily the thing. But any needed work items that overlap until the new year will be completed as soon as the spring weather return. And we think that this could be possibly a good thing because it will give some of the millings an opportunity to settle. At this point in time, we anticipate a springtime opening for this new town center investment. So that's Mr. Council President's summary of what we are at this point in time.
Is there any way or anything you'd say to address the concerns about the soil conservation? Do we have silt fencing put up at this time? Is it being put up? Any information you give to the council?
Yeah, I, I asked engineer Corey Stoner to be on this meeting and he's on because he's as our municipal engineer, is kind of very dogged, I like to put it that way. Corey, could you answer any questions in that regard?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Corey.
I can, I can give you an update. In regards to silt fence, yes, the silt fence is installed and the soil erosion measures are, are in place as, you know, as for several weeks when they started the grading for the, the track itself. It was correct, we did not receive the soil conservation permit until November tenth. The, and all I can say for that is the, I guess, the, the only answer I can give you that is there was a miscommunication between my office and Spohn Ranch, who was actually going to apply for the application itself. So, you know, we, we started putting the application together at the beginning of October. We missed their, the October meeting of Soil Conservation District, and that's Upper Delaware. Just, you know, that's not so Sussex County, because Sussex County does not exist anywhere. That was merged together with Warren County, make Upper Delaware Soil Conservation District. And, and in that time that we had submitted the application and I had the permit, we did, we did start the grading. So we did start the grading ahead of time. The whole time I was in contact with Sandy Myers, I let her know we were starting. And I said the application was going to be in. And so they were aware of our project. They're aware that we, we started beforehand. They have had noticed that we have started construction, but it is, you know, you know, well after the time that we started grading. Bottom line, the cart got before the horse a little bit. We corrected the situation, the permit is in hand. Everybody's noticed the, there will not be any fines associated with that work. Upper Delaware, we, we as a township has worked with Upper Delaware Soil Conservation District for many years and before that was Sussex County. For many projects, they understand our quality of work and, and our procedures. So, so they gave us some leeway there with, it is not the best practices to do it in the manner that we did. It won't happen again, but we did get the permit after the fact. We started, we do have it now. The, all, all the measures are in place and that's, that's all I can say on that matter. So that is not a mayor issue. That is, that was an issue between myself and the Spohn Ranch. And we corrected the issue and we're moving on from here.
Thank you, Corey. I join you in that responsibility. I'm not going to throw you guys on the bus. You're an actual engineer. You know, when we don't do things exactly the way we're supposed to in the town, you it is said that the cover-up sometimes is worse than the crime, for lack of a better word. You communicate exactly as you communicated to me. And I'm just pleased that you were so upfront here with the public on this. Thank you, Governor.
No problem. And just so everybody knows, I spoke to Sandy Myers today. So she's aware of the issues. I told her we had a meeting today and if I would come up again, just to alarm her, not alarm, just to notify her that, you know, somebody may be in contact. So she is aware of the situation fully and we will, we'll take care of it from here. One item that was discussed was the road department's doing the grading. We had multiple meetings with Spohn Ranch and our community. And the reason it was decided to do some grading work with the town's forces is so we can get a larger, a larger product, a better product. We looked at different options and the best option we thought was that the town would do some grading beforehand. There was some rentals with equipment and the one day they worked on the weekend, it was talked about why they had to work on a weekend on a Saturday. I did request that because that was the Saturday before the nor'easter came through. And the nor'easter came through and after that they would, no work could occur for about a week and a half. So the, so it was, if they would not have been able to, you know, start work there, you know, when they did or get as far as they could, we, the project would have been delayed even further. Now, there was another comment, there's a couple of comments about performance bonds and deadlines. The performance bond is fine, you know, the performance bond was put in place. I think back to the beginning of, or at the end of September. So the performance bond is definitely in place. Contracts are in file with the, with the, with the clerk's office. So that's fine. We had a, when we did a design build, we, they put a, a date in there of November, beginning of November, I think, November fourth, when they projected they would be completed. It is not, we did not have a penalty date because this is a design build type of situation. We were unsure if we'd even get completed this year, but we, we wanted to try like tech to get it done this year with some weather issues and now it's getting very cold. Right now I don't see them being a hundred percent completed this year. It's going to pull, it's going to fall into the spring. And at the spring, we'll get a better product anyways than to try to pave right now. So it is moving forward. Today they have a lot of the millings and we use millings. They got the millings delivered from our paving project. So they, they came right from Barrett Road, I think in Glenwood Mountain Room. Between the two of them, I think they did. And that is what's used, we're reusing that material underneath the, the track. So the, they, that helped them as well to get a larger product. So, but right now, they worked through this weekend. They are not working today. Likely the, right now they're just seeing if the weather warms up before they'll be back. But it's, it's going to end up that this will be completed in early spring when the weather cooperates a little bit more with the temperature. The issue with the temperature is that they have to now put asphalt on top of the millings that were placed and really start to form, final form the, the pump track. But they can't, it's hard to do that when it gets cold. They need five or six days in a row or else it just jeopardizes the quality of the product, the product. So it depends if the weather's going to cooperate here or not, how much they get into that. But it definitely is, they're well along, they're well along. They made good progress in the last week and a half, though.
Thanks, Corey.
Thank you, Corey. Marcy, can you forward the Oprah request and the information that went, I think it was Mr. Dunlop spoke about it to all the council members? So we all have a copy of them, we can read for ourselves what was the correspondence on this.
I ask a question. Corey or Mayor, can you tell me where we are as far as to budget and where the costs lie right now?
That would, yeah, we're going to be, I guess, Mayor. Bottom line, I think we're, we're pretty close to budget itself, other than the rental equipment. I think there was about eight thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars in extra cost related to the rental equipment. And then whatever the overtime time was for the DPW.
All right, now with the delay in the timeframe for blacktopping the, the track itself going to spring, will that impact any of the cost with Spohn Ranch?
No, we did not put a penalty in here for going into the spring year. So that won't help us in that situation. But again, this was a design build, it's a little different than what a normal bid project would be. But we did not have that in the contract for this particular project. But it will not change the product, the total price for Spohn Ranch.
It won't change the cost.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other council persons have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Corey, could you talk to the cost savings by using recycled asphalt product? And some of the things that you did to keep the cost down?
I'm sorry, you cut out, Mike?
Yeah, I know there was, you used recycled asphalt product. And that was purpose of that was to show some cost savings. Was there cost savings by using recycled asphalt product? And, and did you see any other cost savings from, from the design?
I, I don't think there was a cost savings from using asphalt. There's cost saving over asphalt versus concrete. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. It's a, it's a more economic product. We decided to go with that product other than a dirt product, a dirt path because of the fact that once it's paved, it's very little maintenance of the, of the trail itself. Right now, the design is to have a paved asphalt trail which in, inside the, the, inside the trail proper will be likely be mulched. So that, once again, to try to keep it easy maintenance for our crews. And then outside of the topsoil ceded, kind of like a lawn area. But it is, the, the track itself is a cheaper option versus concrete. It's more expensive than, than like a dirt track. Like I think West Milford has a dirt track. And maybe a lot, it's more expensive than that, but it's less maintenance and less liability. One of the issues those talked a lot about is over time, if you have an issue running, things, running or erosion, it could be a safety issue. And it was one of the reasons why I decided to go with an asphalt track.
Corey, what's the lifespan of a asphalt track?
Well, the asphalt track, you probably get about, you get down the roadway, hopefully up, I would believe, normally like a paved roadway, you're thinking about ten, fifteen years before you get some major crackage. There's no loading on this. So the only damage you're really going to get is from the weather, freeze, freeze fall. You know, I would leave within, you know, you get down about ten years, you have ten years down the road, you might be cracked, the only film's a fracture, you've got some repairs. But you can extend this indefinitely. I would think that you get down the road about ten years or so, you'd be looking at sealing it like you do some of your trails, you know, your trails at the, at the, at the park, at Maple Grange Park and some of the other trails. You seal it and you try to keep the surface as best you might, as best you can. But you're not going to have to touch the asphalt surface for a number of years after it's done.
Thank you.
So there would be no cost with maintenance for at least ten years or just little cost? Right, that's a question a lot of people have. The maintenance to keep this track, this track going.
I think the maintenance is not going to be relative to the asphalt trail itself. The maintenance will be for the, the areas around the, the, the trail. It's because remember this is going to be like a park setting. Like when you, for instance, you've got Maple Grange Park, you put a turf field there, you don't have to touch the field again, but you have to maintain all the borders and, and and with mowing and weeds and things of that nature, you gotta, you know, so there's always maintenance to this facility. But the actual asphalt track, until you have a chance, a situation where it starts down the road, you might start to get some cracks and and, you know, at that time you'll have some heavier maintenance, but you won't be doing that for many years.
Anybody have any other questions?
Except on the trails.
Just.
Before we do the trails, I wanted to make a comment on, on what I, the reason why I mentioned the DPW's involvement with this, I am the N U A chair, and it did come up on interclearing, we have asked the question to, to the D W about clearing easement, which is required twice a year. The, and for the N U A stories, and I was told that that's, that was the reason why they worked in that area. I obviously was, was wrong about it. I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't aware that they, they had some involvement with the project. So I, I quit, you know, obviously, and I said, I corrected myself. So that's the reason why I said what I did was I, because I thought that's the way, that's the way, that's what actually happened. So I just wanted to mention.
Anyone else? John, anything? Morning?
We're still on the contract.
We can go right to the trail.
Oh, oh, we've, oh, we've finished?
It kind of blends together itself, but take it where you want.
Also give a summary on that too. As it relates to the this is the trail. Are you precise with these, but yeah. What did you try to appear? I can't believe. Okay. As it relates to the trail, you know, in previous comments by me, as well as members of the council, we have repeated, made it clear that we view the town center walk-in and bike-in trail again as an investment in our town. And have provided evidence and comments to support our logic that our town center walk-in and bike-in trail will be an economic driver for the business development. Business development that we want and that we really need in our town center area. Because I believe that it will be quite helpful in us gaining a shared understanding of what we currently find outstanding. That is, as it relates to the municipal town's movement towards finally building the town center portion of the municipal walk-in biking trail. I will provide a brief summary of number one. The events that were, that have resulted in us not being able to move forward with the construction of the town center portion of the municipal biking and walking trail. And number two, where we are at this time, plus our plan of action to close the loop on the remaining outstanding issues and finally get the town center portion of the municipal walk-in biking trail completed. Relative to point one. I had previously communicated to both the council and the public that we had planned to construct the trail through an easement that had been promised to the town by H R Two Development Corporation, one of Mr. Andy Moberge Hill's companies. Based on the belief that the gaining of this easement was the last hurdle to getting the trail construction started. In late October of last year, I authorized the publication of a notice for bids for the construction of the trail. In mid-November of last year, the town received six good bids. Three of which were actually under the municipal engineer Corey's cost estimate to build the trail. In my January thirteen twenty-one update to the council on the status of efforts to move forward with the construction of the trail, I advised that prior to awarding the bid for the construction of the trail, we discovered two issues that had to be resolved relative to the easement from H R Two Development. Both issues related to other existing easements and in fact some coveties on the H R Two Development property that could conflict with the current route of the trail as it was designed. Business administrator Chuck Holker and municipal engineer Stoner and myself spent a considerable amount of time and effort and in fact some funds trying to resolve the conflicting issues related to the other existing easements and our, and, and coveting on H R Two property. After the three of us reevaluated and reviewed, ate the considerable amount of time and effort plus the funds that we had already spent on trying to resolve these conflicting issues. And number two, on the likelihood that we would be able to ever, to ever fully resolve the complex issues related to these other existing easement and our coveting. I made this decision to move away from the H R Two Development Corporation property and redirect the construction of the trail through the Baldwin property, which the council had authorized me to purchase by the passage of ordinance twenty-one oh six. The council's authorization for me to purchase the Baldwin property was conditioned on the town obtaining a clean Phase One environmental study. The Phase One environmental study conducted at the Baldwin property identified an old, and I quote, fifty-five gallon drum and other refuse as items of environmental concern that needed additional investigation. This additional investigation was done in the form of a Phase Two environmental study that was conducted on this property. The Phase Two environmental study revealed some lead contaminated soil in the immediate area surrounding this fifty-five gallon drum and other refuse. The Phase Two environmental study was conducted by A D R Environmental, a New Jersey D E P licensed remediation professional. Evaluated, evaluated the soil in the immediate area and included that number one, the lead contamination came from the lead and glass bottles and metal food containers from this site. Evidence here was quite normal during that period of time that people ducked their goggles and stuff there. Number two, the glass bottles and metal powder containers were decades old. And number three, this was not an unusual discovery because lead was commonly used in many containers in the past decade. The amount of lead in the soil was measured at five hundred and thirty parts per million. On this level is four hundred and seventy parts per million of forty-seven percent below the New Jersey D E P's allowable standard of a, of a thousand parts per million for industrial and commercial sites. That, for the type of, that we will, that we plan to use the Baldwin property for, it is still slightly, that is thirty parts per million of six percent above the New Jersey D E P's residential standard of five hundred, no, five hundred parts per million. So it was literally below the standard for what we plan to use the site, but it was actually six percent of thirty parts per million above the residential standard. The mayor of the council chose to use the residential standard of five hundred parts per million as our minimum acceptable standard for purchasing this property. The mayor's office communicated this decision to the owners of the Baldwin property and they have hired a New Jersey D E P licensed remediation professional to remove the contaminated soil. Relative to point two, per the authorization given me by the council in ordinance twenty-one oh six and through the diligent focused efforts of business administrator Holger, I recently was able to sign a contingency contract for the town to purchase the Baldwin property as soon as I receive official confirmation from the D E P that the lead contaminated soil has been cleaned up to their satisfaction. My decision to sign this contingency contract was also influenced by the fact that the very reasonable two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar purchase price for the Baldwin property will not come from current taxpayer funds, but has been approved by the council to be sourced from the municipal open space fund. And B, since the Sussex County Open Space Committee also had the affirmative decision to use the Baldwin property for this community benefit, they provided a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to be used to purchase this property. What this means is that we will actually be using only about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars of the municipal open space fund to purchase the property. The owners of the Baldwin property have con, have contracted with the Sussex County D E P licensed remediation professional Applied Service Corporation in Lafayette to remove the contaminated soil. They have informed us that Applied will start the removal of this contaminated soil within the next five workdays. That is on November the twenty-third. To prepare the town to be ready to start construction of the trail as soon as the contaminated soil is removed, I have instructed municipal engineer Stoner to again publish a notice for bids for the construction of the trail with the requirement that we receive bids not later than November the third. That bid request will be advertised early next week. Well, I believe it's already advertised, am I correct, Corey? I believe so. He might not be on here. He moved himself. At the council scheduled December the thirteenth meeting, I plan to present a resolution for the council to authorize awarding the trail construction bid to the selected bidder. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, will, soil, I don't know if Corey's can hear us, will soil conservation permit be required to do this?
Corey, are you on? Are you still on? I see your name.
I am still on and that's a very good question. Yes, they will be. The, this project will not be, will not start until after the first of year, but we will definitely have the permit in hand. I, I promise you that.
What's it, five thousand cubic yards have to be moved before you have to get the permit?
It's five thousand square feet.
Square feet, okay. Thank you.
The trail is from the municipal building down to the Black Creek's about a half a mile long. So it's, it's easily over five thousand square feet. So it's not a difficult project if, when it comes to soil, you know, soil conservation, we just basically have to have silf fence on the lower side of the trail, the whole entire length. Just to guard against soil running downhill, but the permit will be needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Corey, am I correct? Those bids went out this week?
Yes, the, it was advertised on actually last Thursday, the eleventh. And the bids will be received on November thirtieth.
Do we have any numbers as far as the cost of what we spent so far to acquire the Baldwin property? Because we had to pay for phase one and I believe we paid for phase two, or is the property owners paying for phase two?
Chuck, I actually looked at the numbers. You have any of those numbers?
Actually, twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand dollars.
And that came out of open space?
Yes.
The question I have, what, what was the original estimated cost for the town center trail? That's two, two-part question. What's the estimated cost? Oh, was it about a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, Corey, do you happen to have your paperwork that shows, you had given an estimate and we had actually three bids that came under, three that was over? Do you happen to remember what those numbers were, range?
Yeah, give me one second. I believe my estimate was a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And we had bids of one twenty-nine, one sixty-eight, one seventy-four. The last time, this trail come up on the Baldwin track, we, we aligned the trail to come up closer to where the, the pump track would be located. So that they, somebody doesn't have to walk up the entire, you know, that paved driveway from the pump station. So it, it lines up better, but it's a little longer, but it's not much. I still, my estimate right now is a, the estimate cost of construction is a little over, I had a hundred and sixty-one thousand is my estimate right now for that, based on the.
Look at under what the original was.
And it's slightly changed.
It's slightly changed a little bit, but my estimate's still around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
As you well know, Tony and I, I believe Harry was originally on the two thousand sixteen Greenway Action Advisor Committee. So you could probably agree that ever since two thousand sixteen, we've been, we've been working on parish projects, trail projects and, and one of the ones we identified was the town center trail. And the reason why we identified the town center trail is within the town center and we thought there was an economic benefit to, to the construction of a town center trail to, to help city like local economy. So that, that was one of the things that we identified. So we've literally been working on, you know, on that project for five years.
I have a little bit of a different idea. I thought I joined the Greenway thinking we were going to connect Maple Grange to Canal. That was our big project and then that fell through because of contamination. This was our second choice, correct?
That's correct.
And I just, I wish Craig was here. He had a lot to say and, you know, he's been working so hard and um, just, we just want to make sure. We've been working on this for six years now and nothing really seems to go forward.
Yeah.
You know, what happens if the, the testing doesn't come back? Like.
Well, actually, our, our, all, all of the testing is done.
So they clean it up and it.
Well, they're going to have, they're going to have to clean it up. They're going to have to clean it up. They've identified very specifically where the, the lead contaminated soil. In fact, the lead contaminated soil is really nowhere near where we're going to build anything. It's just on that property. But we thought we'd be very conservative about it. And in fact, we could literally use the industrial standard based on what we were going to use that for. But we thought that we need to be a little bit more responsible about it. We use the lowest standard possible, really. So there have been two looks at this. One of the phase one, one of the phase two, they know exactly where the soil lives. They know how much they've got to remove. And once they remove it, it'll be approved by the D E P because of the fact that this, this L S R P licensed. This L S R P license, uh.
Site remediation.
Site remediation. They they are ones who are, who have been authorized to act on behalf of the D E P. In that result, so. So, you know, it's, I I I know it's, I know it's been frustrating, uh, for a very, very long period of time. Again, my my whole interest in this is that we've got a seventy square mile town. And we obviously can't. Build everything all over the sets, square about seventy square about, but we have our town center. It's time that we stop talking about. What we think we want to do in this town. So we need to develop the town center and we need to invest in the town center. You know, you know, it's the the our town center, this town is our home and our town center is like our home. You know, if you really want your home to increase in value, you know, you have to change the siding. You have to do the roof, you have to put solar panels on, you have to do your, you have to invest in it. That's what you really got to do. Uh, to make it attractive for 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 businesses to want to come here. In addition, we have another issue here with, uh. Some decisions that have been made, uh, years ago as it relates to our sewer system. Uh, twenty twenty three, we've got a tremendous, a tremendous financial responsibility coming. And 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 the interesting thing is that the sewer system is not owned by the M U A. Uh, uh, the M U A does not own any of that resource. The town owns those resources. The entire town is as responsible for our sewer system as they are for our police cars. As they are for our fire trucks. The town, uh, as a whole, it's it's clear in the, in the legal documents related to that. So for us to sit here and not to take some kind of of action to see what we can do. To, um, um, build up our town center number one and at the same time address some of the issues that we have. With our sources would be irresponsible. What's the use of being on the board or committee or being mayor if you aren't gonna do that? And so that has really been my focus, the town center, any and everything that I can do to drive. Individuals and resources towards this town center with the hope and the prayer that it'll be developed. That's what I, that's what I've done. That's what I will continue to do.
You know, if I can add to, just last Friday, it came to my attention. There was a resolution passed. It was like between, I think it might have been two thousand and thirteen. And I did forward it to to the mayor and uh, our attorney, which I probably have time to read yet. That resolution said that if Black Creek Drive was ever to have repairs made, cause you know it's in bad shape. You have the M U A trucks going over D P dub trucks, you have the deliveries to the plumbing supply. The solar company was to pay for half of it. Now, I never knew this till last Friday when I saw the resolution. And I don't know, you guys passed so many hundreds of resolutions on council, if you would recall it, cause Mr. Lynch and Mr. Reso, you weren't on the council at that time. That we should pursue that. Now, I I don't remember, I wasn't prepared to to address that now, but the company that owns the majority. Of those solar panels was just bought out, but we should pursue that. Because, you know, that price is being talked about. I'm repairing that and the road's horrible. Let's face it. It's absolutely horrible, but if we can recover, I don't know what the cost would be. Uh, Cory, you're still on and I know this is just coming up. We haven't even, I haven't asked the mayor to discuss this with you. Potentially, we could take tens of thousands of dollars. Cause I'm I'm gonna think there would be maybe drainage. I don't know if you can just put down tar and chip on it, but if they're gonna be responsible, we should pursue that. And I I don't know if they've, if Marcy, if you could see if there's a contract in there, I can get the resolution and just copy it. That would save us literally tens of thousands of dollars. We should pursue that. Then we talk about plans and what we should do with the town center. Now, I've been a big opponent of the Western scenic byway. Because I don't approve of the roads it's it's on, because we all know how treacherous five fifteen can be. Uh, but if you a- actually take the time to read the plan, the corridor management plan, it's a good. Sound plan. I think the D O T spent like two hundred and four thousand dollars doing the plan. It outlines how those roads are also danger and require more investigation. But it also talks about alternative methods of transportation. It talks about trails. It talks about. Uh, biking lanes, hooking into the town center, hooking into the byway, different parts. It talks about, um, S T Rs, which were ahead of the short term rentals. And we just did that, I think it was in early, uh, twenty twenty, I think we passed it. But here they were talking about this couple of years. Uh, stone fences with Kirk, I guess, what do you have, about two miles of stone fences on Sand Hill? I mean, your guys do a great job. I see them maintaining all the time. They talk about those stone fences. Most of us call them stone walls, but they're actually stone fences. There is a number of issues they bring up and when you talk about the sales, I mean, the uh, trails and stuff. Uh, it's just one of the issues and I think it goes through C five through C eight, you know, the document's about a hundred and ten pages. And I really don't know how many people have read. I've always gone to the master plan, but uh, I think it was last October. I put an Oprah into the D O T for the financials and all emails, so I could start really understanding what the process is. Now I got back over a thousand pages, so it took a lot of time to go through. But if you take the time to read this plan, you will see we are in it. And then there's a whole historical component to it. There's the farming component to it, and I think that's where Kirk's farm is mentioned in as well as some of the other farms. How we need to develop these and they talk about the town center, cause let's face it, there's five redevelopment towns. In Vernon, all five, if not directly, indirectly connect to the scenic western byway. But you have to spend the time, I wouldn't, thousand pages of emails. But if you go through the plan, it really coordinates the master plan we have, our recreation plan, our open space plan. And it's right there on those hundred and ten pages. And the best part is the Vernon taxpayers didn't pay for it. I mean, indirectly, the whole state, or I guess the money may have actually came from federal, but it was two hundred and four thousand, if I remember correctly, plan. That we have access to it and we can use it and we're following it. But I it's really a great document for the incoming council, Mr. Zero, I think you might have been part of that committee. And to go through this and understand what they're saying, that's an independent engineering firm hired by the D O T. They had the meetings here, many, many different attributes. They, if you look at the total concept of this plan and the town center trail and amenities to talk about, they even talk about breweries. Being some way to bring people in town and we've talked about that since two thousand sixteen. So.
Isn't there a lot of, um, grants available to D O T and and. And the, it, once you get this trail started and people see that 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 this is happening. Um, I think there's gonna be a lot of available grant money, uh, coming from the D O T. They're they're strongly encouraging these types of. Greenways and and alter- alternate ways of of getting around. And to answer your question about Craig and I did, I want to speak for what, Craig Williams has been working on this for twenty years. I was on the environmental commission with him. I was on the Greenway Committee with him. He, he wanted this town center to move forward and I'm probably speaking for him. But he also wanted the, we were big on the trail within Maple Grange apartment where we purchased that, that, that. You know, that area and and to continue up with that trail too, that that is a priority. So those are the two priorities, that trail over in that area and the town center trail, but the the bottom line is there's a lot of money available to to build these. And, um, and the money that we're talking about, you know, to to build this, to put this trailer. I think it's gonna have a big economic, uh, positive economic, uh, impact on on the town center.
I I I really, I really think it's unfortunate that, uh. That so much emotion has gotten involved in this around individuals and individual personalities. I really do. Uh. Because of the fact that. Our choice is not to. Not do anything. And stay pat of who we are. If we don't do anything, our town is going to decline. Our our choice is to ease investing our town and 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 try to make it better. And there's all kinds of evidence. There's all kinds of literature that talks about the advantages of trails. And if the kind of thing that people are are looking for. And it is, it's just a tremendous advantage. There are all kinds of statistics and things. Some of it we've actually given in some of these, in so- in some of these meetings. Uh. I I'm telling, in my view, has come out of what I call this, this rainstorm of of COVID. On a, on a, on a rainbow of a tremendous possibility. There's a lot of positive opportunity in this town and and, you know, people have seen the changes in what we've done the last two years. Uh, and we've seen, we've seen lots of organizations that have been attracted to our town to want to build here. Uh, the the potential for, uh, uh. For the medical center, uh, uh, Skyland's Medical, it's just tremendous. This guy, Skyland Medical, uh, has has purchased this, 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 uh, the bank building, uh. Not Ohio State Bank Bill. And literally is going to, uh, uh, put some medical resources there, so that people won't have to travel outside of town. It's gonna have. A good use of the building. We see all different kinds of things. This building right up, this building, um, uh, uh. I'm 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 losing my thought here, uh, the.
Failing building right here.
Not not on Friday, but they, the, the building where the guy's putting the blue.
The failing building.
The failing bill. This individual is, um, he owns a huge company. Uh, he does both commercial and residential real estate. His headquarters in in Clifford. He's gonna move it up here. He's moved up here, he's got his kids up here, uh. You know, people don't spend their money. They don't do these kinds of things if they, if they don't have any faith in investing. Uh, the 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 people o- over at the automobile art store, a shop over here. That whole, that whole, that whole facility over here, they just opened a new facility and they've got tremendous plans in terms of what they really want to do. Uh, so there there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of opportunity and anytime any of these things are happening in this town center. I see it bringing people in and when you bring people, it is said, that that the thing, if you build, they will come, if you come, they will build it. That's what I really believe. So I I just, I just think that we owe to something good here. We've got to invest. We got to invest in our town. We have to invest in our health. We have to invest in ourselves. There's no such thing as the pre-lunch. And I really think that the town as a whole is really gonna benefit from it. I'm convinced of that.
You know, we've applied for those D O T grants and we haven't received one, but now there's like a hundred million dollars floating around in the state from this art money. And we'd be foolish not to try to reach out. I mean, Sussex County passed this program, but the most you can get is five thousand. We'll take every cent. Grant program for any, um, projects. The other thing we have to look at, cause you brought up the Masca Marsh. Is Cory, do we still have the D E P permit or did that expire? Cause I think it takes about two years to get one. It expired.
It expired, it expired.
Cause that was always a site for botanical garden and it was supposed to be a memorial park and the council, I think in two thousand and ten passed that resolution. So we still have to make good on that, but if this money is coming and we can get grant money. Any money associated with the byways, I believe it has to be, uh, competing against with the, I think there's eight total byways in the state. But the D O T money, there's a lot of money out there for the D O T right now and it ju- and it's gonna be released.
That be, that D E P permit expired, but I have talked to Cory about that. If he believed that, am I correct, Cory, just the formality in terms of applying for. We have a great chance of getting it back again.
Yes, if I want to say it's formal, but we have to redo the the permit application and, uh, we talked before that the permit originally obtained. Uh, got across what we'll call the marsh over to the old Masca Road. Um, the, uh, the permit, uh, we would extend it from the kitchen Masca Road back to Maple Grange. One of the issues was always how to get across the bridge there. Um, other than utilizing the roadway, but, uh, we got some work to do there. I do believe also, one, you're talking about grants and different opportunities. Um, one of the, the Highlands has, uh, uh, made an avenue for us to use some planning grants. For the creation of a circulation plan and they said we could use some of the funds. Um, you know, from that, uh, planning effort that in these designing, you know, the, the progressing our designs of the trails as well, so. That might be a good option for the canal road one.
One thing I just wanted to say, and I kind of stayed on her, and I'm not trying to be negative and I think this is a good idea and I'm. For the trail and I'm for the pump track for different reasons. I mean, we have the Appalachian, I'm sorry, I said, I'm for the pump truck and the, um. Trail in town, but for different reasons. I mean, we have the Appalachian Trail right on ninety four and. You know, during COVID, it was packed. I don't think it brought a lot of people into our town. We think the pump track and the trail is good to bring a good amenity to attract new residents, children. And I I think that's where we'll maybe see a benefit. I think we need to be more business friendly in this town. I think that's where we need help. I think that's our biggest issue in this town. You see it review, right, with your, how did no one help this thing? So again, I am for the pump track. I think it's a great idea and I think the trial is, you know, when I saw that project that Cory. I was like, oh wow, we have to have this, but I don't think it's.
John, any comments? Nobody else? Tony, anything else? Andrew?
No, I'm good.
Just wait for Marcy.
There is one point I did want to bring up. Cory, when we did this presentation on the trail and the track in June last year, uh. This year, um, we had the trail at two forty five. Now you have a number of one sixty one. Was there something else in that one, two forty five?
No, that two forty five, that included the, um, um, what they did, uh, I thought we were just talking. The the trail from the municipal building to the Black Creek Drive was, my estimate now to is a hundred and sixty. We part of that trail, the two forty five included the trail around the, um, around the pump track.
Okay.
I did throw that in as a, also the bid for the, uh, just to see if we got a really good price for this bid, but, uh, right now for the actual, the main trail. Is a half a mile trail. That's a, my estimate's a hundred and sixty and change. I I have to go with the exact number was. But I think that two forty five included the, uh, uh, the trail to, uh, for the municipal to Black Creek and then a, a loop trail around the pump track.
Okay.
I, what's that?
Are we not doing the?
I I don't know.
Cory, uh, the drawing that you have for the pump track, you have a trail around that. Is that, that's, that is being included?
Yes, I, well, I did as an alternate bid to see what the numbers came in, so I wanted to make sure we got the. The base bid in and that's different than where we put it out last time, is we didn't have the pump track developed to the point where we could have it now. So we, uh, we put that in, I put that as a pump, um, as an alternate bid, so we had a number for. Um, if, when you were doing your June presentation, we didn't have a bid number. That was an estimate, so, uh, uh, we'll, we'll throw in alternate bids to see what the number came. If you got a good number, it's something the council may want to consider.
Okay, cause we also have in there a net number of fifty thousand dollars for ADA compliant, which was included in it. So I just want to make sure we got the the numbers clear and the design includes the trail around the track as well as going to town center.
Right, well, that's the two forty five includes that fifty thousand, uh, at that time is what I estimated for the part around the pump track.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Can we get a copy of the, what the, what the current plan is? I I've seen the, I've seen, yeah, I have seen.
I'll make sure you get that.
Yeah, so Marcy, could you also do that for all the council people too, with, might just request whatever the mayor gives?
That's the current plan of the trail.
Yeah, I know a die, a map went out, but, uh, we get whatever particulars we can, so we know that's where we stand. All right, you said, all, you can move on. You all good?
Good.
All right, Tony, you good? John, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, number seven minutes, regular meeting, October fourteenth, twenty twenty one. May I have a motion to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty one meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second tip.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Oberkra.
Yes.
Council member Chili. Council member Yuri. Council member Pitsker.
Yes.
Council president Shortway.
Yes. Okay, uh, the resolutions, I'll read them all in title and we'll do a consent agenda by all means, any council person wishing to pull one out. For further discussion or a roll call vote, please inform me at the, at the end and Marcy will pull that then. The resolutions, I'll do them all as a consent. Okay, resolution twenty one two thirty, a resolution establishing the township of Vernon policy for hybrid meetings of the Vernon Township Council. Uh, resolution twenty dash two thirty one, appointment to the Vernon Township Municipal Utilities Authority. This resolution will approve an appointment, uh, from into my previous seat. Resolution twenty one dash two thirty two, resolution authorizing leasing of certain vehicles for the Department of Police. Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty-two, resolution authorizing leasing of certain vehicles for the Department of Police. Do source well, National Cooperative number zero six, zero six, one eight, E F M through Enterprise Fleet Management Services, Inc. Quote, number six, zero, three, seven, six, seven, six, one times color Oxford white. This resolution authorizes the leasing of certain vehicles. Resolution twenty-one dash two three-three, a resolution informing participation with the state of New Jersey Federal Grant Program administered by the Division of Criminal Justice Department of Law and Public Safety. This resolution proves participation in the grant programs. Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty-four, resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriation to be included in twenty twenty budget as a revenue and appropriation of thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. This resolution requests approval of a revenue and an appropriation. Resolution twenty-one dash two three, two three five, resolution authorizing the hiring of a police special duty scheduling and processing vendor through the competitive contracting process. This resolution authorizes the hiring of, uh, policies, special duty scheduling, processing vendor, I think it's police. Resolution twenty-one dash two three, two three six, authorizing the award of required disclosure contract for container services at the township's public works and animal control facilities. This resul- resolution authorizes the award of a contract. Resolution twenty-one dash two three seven, resolution authorizing the award of required disclosure contract with law soft Inc. For police records management system, FireCAT software. This resolution authorizes the award of required disclosure contract. Resolution twenty-one dash two three eight, resolution of the township of Vernon County, Sussex, state of New Jersey approving and authorizing the purchasing manual. This resolution approves and authorizes the purchasing manual. Resolution twenty-one dash two three nine, resolution authorizing cancellation appropriation reserve balances. This resolution, resolution twenty-one dash two forty, authorize the cancellation appropriation reserve balances. Resolution twenty-one dash two forty, resolution authorizing cancellation appropriations reserve balances. Resolution number twenty-one dash two four one, resolution authorizing the option for employees of the township of Vernon to waive health insurance benefits. This resolution authorizes employees to waive health insurance benefits. Resolution twenty-one dash four, two, four, two, transfer resolution, balance transfers. This resolution authorizes balance transfers. Resolution twenty-one dash two four three, authorizing the mayor to continue the incentive to employees who enroll in an alternate health or prescription plan. This resolution authorizes incentive for alternate health or prescription plans. Resolution twenty-one dash two four four, refund for tax court judgment, block three, nine, one, lot ten, Diane Thompson, Thompson. Resolution twenty-one dash two four five, refund for tax court judgment, block three, nine, one, lot ten, Diane Thompson. Resolution twenty-one dash two four six, refund overpayment, block one, six, one, lot fifty-three, the Wiker Title Group. Resolution twenty-one dash two four seven, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, non-life, lot four, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two four eight, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, oh, nine, lot four, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two four nine, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Roll call twenty, uh, resolution twenty-one dash two fifty, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five one, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five two, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, Walker A. Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five three, right refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five four, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five five, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five six, refund for state tax court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five seven, refund for state court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five eight, refund for state court judgment, block three, zero, nine, lot four, building, Walker A. And Mary Elizabeth. Resolution twenty-one dash two five nine, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the township of Vernon and the borough of Hamburg for animal control services. This resolution and resolutions twenty-one dash two six zero, twenty-one dash two six one, twenty-one dash two six two, twenty-one dash two six three, authorize the execution of shared service agreement for animal control services. Resolution twenty-one sixty, read, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the township of Vernon, the township partisan for animal control services. Resolution twenty-one dash two sixty-one, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the township of Vernon and the township of Lafayette for animal control services. Resolution twenty-one dash two six two, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the township of Vernon, the township of Monaco for animal control services. Resolution twenty-one dash two six three, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the township of Vernon and the borough of Ogden Spur for animal control services. Resolution twenty-one dash two six four, resolution support of those communities with, which urging the Sussex County Board of Commissioners to provide equity to those municipalities who provide dispatch services. This resolution supports the Sussex, Sussex County Board of Commissioners to provide equity for dispatch services. That being said, now the motion for those resolutions I just read, unless somebody has one they want to pull out. All right. Marcy, we'll take note of this and then we'll, we'll vote on the consent and then we'll save those to the end. Go ahead, Tony.
The mask, I feel like it's up to the individual. Like in, in meetings here, where we're all on the hot spot. So I feel like it's almost more political than purpose. So that's just me, I just don't know enough. And then, uh, resolution twenty-one, two thirty-one, I just knew nothing about this person. I never saw a resume or anything. So I would abstain from the M U I, um, appointment to the Vernon County Municipal Utility. I don't know how I could vote when I know nothing about this. See, I don't even know, like, don't.
Well, when we bring up the resolution, let's discuss it. Any others? Does anybody want any others pulled out? Okay. So let's vote on the other ones. Marcy, if you want to read what we'll vote on and then up or down. No, we just, we're just pulling the, the first two, correct? So it's from two thirty-two to the end. So all in favor? Aye. Is anybody opposed to those?
We just, we need a motion for those.
Oh, we should do the motion. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Can pass? Okay. Resolution twenty-one dash two thirty. Go ahead, Tony.
That is just, I feel like it should be up to the individual if they want to wear a mask or not. And if they want to attend, that's fine.
Mayor, would you like to have input on this since you're in charge of all the assets?
That's a resolution for the, for the hybrid meeting. I believe, uh, correctly Chuck, I believe that we've got a state policy or directives that says that in our municipal buildings, you've got to wear a mask.
No, it's not required.
Okay.
We have kept a mask mandate in place. Part fifteenth, twenty twenty. And I think we've always done it for the benefit of the people that work here as well as the people visiting here. And that's why we've supplied masks at the front desk. I'll size it on the website. We have it on the door coming in to let people know. You can have your own beliefs about what you think may or may not work.
I don't know how, not to be rude, but your mask is off now and I, like, how is that any different than all sitting here? I'm not arguing. I'm just saying my opinion. I'm not saying right or wrong or giving my, you know, saying I'm right. I'm just saying.
I don't think it's a matter of right or wrong. I agree with you. I agree with you. No, really. Uh, it's just, it's just a policy. And that this, this revolution, as I read it, I understand relates to the town council meeting.
Right.
Okay. Uh, which does not impact our decision to, uh, uh, for, for masks when people come into the municipal center to complete everything. I know that, uh, when I perform weddings and I've performed about twenty of them already this year, believe it or not. Uh, here, uh, when individuals come in, I tell individuals not, I'm, I'm vaccinated. I've had my booster. Uh, but I respect people's wishes. Uh, if they want me to keep my mask on, I will do it. If one person, any, any individual, and sometimes we have, uh, one, one of the, you know, you might have a, a crowd of twenty and one person says, no, I want to keep my mask on. And what I say is that I will keep mine on. So that. So it's, you know, it's, I, I've been in those situations. So really this relates to the town council meeting. And if the council wants to, uh, pass our, our, uh, uh, a resolution saying that you don't have to have, uh, masks on here, or, uh, I'm, I'm not going to object. Uh, it puts me in a position whereby, gee whiz, if I come in here during the daytime, uh, I, uh, I have to where I'm at. But if I come in here during the meeting, I don't, you know, and I don't want to get into all this, this political stuff. I really don't. I really don't. So, uh, uh, I'll look forward to it either way. But if I had, if I had to cast a vote, I would cast a vote different consistency and say, yes. That's the reason why I would. So I'm not so sure if that's.
The resolution basically says that we're going to do it electronically as well as live and we have to follow open Open Public Meeting Act. I don't see anything here where it talks about masks. It's all about doing the electronics, twenty-one dash two thirty, right?
In person, somebody required to wear a mask.
Okay, that's it.
Except for speaking.
All right. I stand corrected on that. I was more concerned about the electronics of it.
Well, that's what we talk about. And, and I, I didn't, I, I, I didn't really focus on that or see that as an issue, but.
Because I'm sitting here the whole time with my mask, but then I'm going to take it off to speak. So someone can hear me. It kind of makes no sense. So.
Well, it's, it's kind of like when we go into restaurants.
Right, right. And I maybe want to.
You know, it's, a lot of this, you know, a lot of it. Uh, I, I was on a plane for four hours and had to wear a mask for hours. It wasn't comfortable.
Oh, I know.
It really wasn't. Uh, but when they served me, uh, uh, pretzels and sodas, I could take it off and eat. And as soon as I did, I put it back on. But you know, it's, it's.
I'm all for following the rules. You have to, but that's just my opinion. We're all kind of far away. I think we leave it up to the individual, but again, just my opinion. I just wanted to state my opinion.
Yep.
Not saying I'm right.
But in the same building here, they have to do a temperature check every morning for every employee. Am I correct, Chuck?
Yep.
But I've also said in this meeting with you, the mask not on.
Mm-hmm. I know.
It can't be hypocritical.
And I'm, and I know that and I know that that is a critical issue, but I've been trying to comply with the building as well. And I know at times my defenses are down as well, but I'm trying to also protect other people because not everybody in this building is vaccinated. And that is concerning, especially going into the winter months. We don't know yet until, right now the rates are up twenty-five percent in New York State. I don't know what they are here in New Jersey.
During, um, I agree when people are working here, but we're talking about meetings. No one's forced.
Mm-hmm. But we have employees in here.
Yeah.
Just another point of reference, it goes, there's a, you know, two, two sides of the street to this one.
Any other comments? Want to make a motion? Seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice President Orberga.
Yes.
Councilmember Chili.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fury.
Yes.
Councilmember Pitsker.
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie.
Two thirty-one? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. I mean, did you, first of all, did you get this in your packet? Cause it names the person.
Yeah.
But I didn't know, like, I don't know anything about him.
Yes. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I was like, he's been on for maybe eight months.
Yeah, he's been on about seven or eight months now.
Yeah. So, uh, Harry, um, there was, uh, we wanted to move him from, I guess, alternate two.
Uh, yeah, I was the one, not, I'm non-voting. And, uh, or he was two and to move him into my slot. He's still a non-voting member.
Yeah, he's, he's already, uh, um, it would be moving him to alternate two to alternate one.
Okay. All right. It doesn't say that. Am I wrong?
It does. It says Scott Gatlin. It says alternate one on the right, but it doesn't say he was moved up.
Right. I just didn't understand. Something I don't know.
Well, and that's good. I mean, that's why we have discussions to clear it up.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Orberga.
Yes.
Councilmember Chili.
Yeah.
Member Fury.
Yes.
Member Pitsker.
Yes.
Yes.
And Carrie.
Okay, that concludes that part. Number nine, this is public comment. Let me do three minutes on any topic. If anyone's speaking, take their name for the record and where they reside. They have a motion to open up public comments.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone, anybody abstaining? Anybody opposing? Okay, floor is open, Marcy. Let's go first in the audience. Uh, does anyone desire to speak?
I feel briefly discussed three items. I hope you indulge me if I go over. The first one has to do with our, they just may as long as, um, ask for everything but recreational, which you can't have these ten million, they'll give you so many feet, some property. Then they, you guys went back and voted on recreational and when that was written up, I don't believe there were those restrictions. I'd like to read something that I wrote. First of all, it makes it perfectly clear I am not anti-marijuana. And I don't care in the least if adults consume marijuana or marijuana infused products. But their source of products is California, which I understand that they have told people this. They're in violation of federal law, whether they're driving in here, using a courier company or US postal service. California legal marijuana is tested in the state laboratory and the packaging clearly states for consumption in California only. And Massachusetts realized that it's almost two years before licenses were granted or stores open. It's a lengthy process and will obviously take time before any licenses are issued and legal shops open. I, to visit the store in question, they are selling sealed containers, the contents of which are unknown. You buy the container and the mystery contents inside are free. They have no, there have been no licenses issued by the state of New Jersey at this point. Therefore, it's a pawn shop. It's as simple as that. If it comes from California, they're violating interstate commerce laws. If it's coming from a licensed New Jersey medical grow and or sale facility, that's also a violation of New Jersey state law. I do believe New Jersey state law allows for possession, gifting. However, if money is being changed, exchanged, it is not gifting, is illegal sale marijuana. As far as their reputation, which people have said they have a good reputation, the only reputation that they actually have is they're currently a company operating in violation of New Jersey state law. I understand the voting officer, zoning officer issued them a permit for a convenience store without knowledge that they were gifting or selling marijuana. It's wrong. I was told that the police have been there and have taken no action. I don't know if that's true or not. Everything you read on social media, obviously isn't true. Uh, I just think it's wrong and, um, I think it should be looked at. My second item has to do with the town of Vernon. I moved here in nineteen ninety-five from Florida. We own property in Central Lake, Michigan, which is a very rural community. And, um, we looked in mountain lakes. We looked in, um, more of plains and the taxes were very high coming from Florida. I was shocked at the amount of tax. So we abandoned the relocation company and went out on our own and came into Vernon and, um, fell at home here. I raised four children. I have a thirty-one-year-old. I have a twenty-nine-year-old. I have a twenty-five-year-old. My second born was a Marine. My third born is presently in the Air Force. And I have a special needs son that's a senior high school. Well-known to everyone as the mayor of that. I strongly disagree. I strongly disagree about this being a tourist town. I moved here in 1995 knowing full well that I was moving to a rural bedroom community with a ski resort slash water park. We are still the same after 26 years. The only difference now is I pay over $10,000 in property taxes versus $2,000 when I moved here. I do realize school taxes are responsible for a large portion of that. The Vernon School District was spending 67 million to educate 5,000 students in 2010. They are now spending 66 million to educate less than 3,000 students. But we have no sound center and in my opinion, we never will. We don't have the traffic. People say, why don't we have a Starbucks? Why don't we have a Panera? Why don't we have a Trader Joe's? It's not that kind of town. There was money, millions of dollars spent on Main Street. My understanding was that they behested in our water park. That never materialized. There was no bonding to make sure that they were on the hook for some of that cost if none of that happened. So now that's been abandoned. We talked about making Church Street and Main Street. We're never going to be a Warwick. We're never going to be a Newton. We don't have the traffic they do. We're never going to be a Sparta. And I think that we're spending foolish money after bad money trying to make Vernon something that it's never going to be. My last item, I have never called for anyone's resignation or will I ever call for anyone's resignation? But I have no confidence in our mayor. I don't believe anything our mayor says. When he was running for mayor, I spoke with him at the high school and we discussed three topics. And he specifically told me that one of his first actions was going to be to relieve our business administrator. He was going to walk away from these trails. He didn't think we could afford it, or was it necessary? And he told me that the MUA was the responsibility of the users. I told him about having to replace my walk-on two times costing me over close to $5,000. It was all said and done. After he became mayor, he was quoted in the newspaper as saying that everybody was responsible for it. And I approached him in the lobby after the meeting. This was in February, just after he became mayor. And he told me he hadn't said it. And I said, you did it to the paper. And so I have the paper in my office, I'll go get it. I stood up there for over 10 minutes waiting for it. I think it was actually you. Mr. Shortway just came and said, it's gone, meeting's over. I said, I'm waiting for the mayor. He said, he's gone. Well, I came to know that you can go out of his office, out back and downstairs. He left. I don't believe him. I don't trust him. The first thing he did as mayor is give our business administrator 15,000 dollar raise. He's all in on the trails. I think it's, I don't think it's going to bring anything. He's always an issue with people. People like coming use it, but not me. One council member said that, yeah, they brought busloads of people to the Appalachian Trail. And what did they do? They either went home or they went to work. Don't have the infrastructure. I don't believe we ever will have the infrastructure because we don't have the traffic. Lastly, on that same topic, very quickly. Apologize for this. I posted on one of the sites about a ordinance that was passed. And I would say my only observation would be why would an ordinance be prepared and voted on without proper legal documentation being obtained? I would have thought our mayor would have had to present to the town council a signed agreement with a complete description of the location and full details where it would be included, as well as duration of the agreement, signed off on by the township attorney prior to presenting to the town council the vote on and enact this legislation. If my observations are correct, it seems our mayor failed, completely failed to properly perform his duties. Additionally, what documentation is on the basis for town councils to enact this legislation? Clarification would be appreciated. You guys passed an ordinance for right of ways from Mr. Molly Hill that was supposed to have been enacted or an agreement made by our mayor for an agreement that was never made. If there had been a right of way granted, there would have been a specific outline of what it was, the physical layout of it. There would have been a written agreement. It should have been signed off on by the attorney and none of that happened. A latest council member confronted me on social media. And when I explained to him, he apologized and said that he had misunderstood. I wasn't talking about open space. I was talking about a right of way that was allegedly granted, which turned out never to have been granted. I believe it was 20-18. It's just an indication, I think, of our mayor failing to do his job. Just like this deal with soap fences and not having the approval to disturb the land. I'm just a complete law. And I would continue to go down the same path and do the same wrong thing over and over again. I don't expect any response, but it's surely been nice to ask you that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? See no one from the audience? Emails or anybody online?
I do have some people online with their hands up and I received an email.
All right, let's go online first and we'll read the emails.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. My name, my name is Rick Hoffman. I live in Glen Harbor Estates. It's a community that's on Glenwood Lake. We share the Glenwood Lake, the Village of Lake Glenwood in the form of Camp Sussex. I'm here to support the gun ordinance that Andrew Pickster is working on. In our lake community, two houses were struck by bullets because of a gun range that was set up on 7 Lakeville Road. And quite frankly, our neighborhood is very concerned that something tragic is going to happen. And I am too. I urge you guys to move forward with that ordinance. What we've come to find out is that really there's no standards for anybody who sets up a gun. Anybody basically with enough space can set up a gun range in any proximity to, close to a neighborhood. And we narrowly avoided a tragedy because we have a lot of kids playing in the neighborhood and they were playing in the neighborhood when this bullet came through the woods or ricocheted or came out of the air and struck a home just over one of my neighbor's heads. And like I said, I urge you to move forward with this ordinance before we have a tragedy. I just find it surprising that there is no standards for setting up a gun range where there's there's close proximity to families and a lake community that's very active. So that's all I have to say. Just please, I just want to go on record and say that I have put this forward and I expect that you guys will do the right thing and.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I guess he's cut off.
I don't know what happened.
Hello, I'm still here.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You guys, thank you.
I have Jesse Palladini.
Yes, Mrs. Palladini. Floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say very quickly that in your best practices survey, there are some things in there that are absolutely false that the state should know about. With regard to the pot shop, I frankly don't care who smokes pot. But I do want to say that after having had lengthy, lengthy discussions in which Tony Chili and Kelly Waller, and at one point, every one of you agreed to not allowing them in the town center and having certain restrictions on them, standalone buildings and that sort of thing. None of that language was put in the ordinance and you all adopted it. Your attorney did not put that in the ordinance. You failed to do that. You adopted that ordinance deceptively without ensuring that language. And now you have created a grandfathered situation in Acme Plaza. This is yet another failed ordinance by Mayor Burrell and Council President Shortway. Okay, Mr. Shortway, your comments about the scenic byway literally made me laugh out loud. First of all, no, the state did not give you $200,000 for the management plan. Jesse Palladini gave you that by creating the scenic byway and seeing it through along with the National Scenic Byway. But you do not endorse the scenic byway because the roads are not safe. But those same roads are involved in your trails and bicycle pump track where you want to bring people into town. I just thought that was so humorous. And last but not least, I'd like to read something and again, considering that Steve Dunlop took eight minutes, I'd like to be able to read mine thoroughly. We ran a campaign for last week's election on cleaning house and voting out the incumbents because we knew how many people were dissatisfied with what Mayor Burrell and the council were doing. But you were so out of touch with the will of the people. You ran our government in a reign of terror and a regime of slander, spite and revenge. Your abuse of power had gotten totally out of control. And the people saw that. Mayor Burrell, you squeaked by your win for mayor with only 116 votes more than your opponent. And you only won because of people like Pat Rizzuto, Brian Lynch and I pushing for you and encouraging people to vote for you. How sad is that? You would not have won otherwise. If only we had known then what you really are, you would not be sitting there today. You completely deceived the residents of this town. Well, this election was a mandate, not only to vote out the incumbents, but also a mandate against you, Mayor Burrell, and against you, Harry Shortway. In the past decade, all municipal elections have been won by anywhere from 20 to 200 votes. Never has an election been won by nearly 5,000 votes or thousands more than the opponents. You, Harry, you won mayor by just a mere 239 votes over your opponent. And in your council run, just 296 votes over your opponents in 2019. Even in the Board of Election, Board of Education election last week, candidates won by just four to 25 votes over the others. Do the numbers. Mayor Burrell and Councilman Harry Shortway, the people are fed up with your reign of tyranny, deception and slander. Your days of framing and defaming people are over. In closing, I am asking Harry Shortway to resign due to a vote of no confidence and because of his total lawlessness and lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palladini.
I have Peg DeStacy.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We hear you, Peg.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to start off by congratulating the Walters for standing up for what was right. And I am glad to see that they were able to be made whole. It's a shame that our tax department had to put them through that. Totally unnecessary and unfair. I would like to also state that I've never been against the trailer, the pump track. But I have been totally against the leadership of how it's been done. From day one, we have been misrepresented. We have been giving false information. We have been given an estimate here, an estimate there. And even today, in this meeting, there's no definite information. Cory's giving us an estimate that the pump track, which was going to be 190 something thousand two years ago in inflationary timeframe is going to be 160,000? That's impossible. Building inflation rate right now is over 15%. So how could it have gone down in his estimate now? Again, false information, inaccurate information and misleading. This has been a consistent problem with this council. If you ask a question, you never get an answer. And if you do, it's never truthful, never transparent. Now. All of us are for investing in our town. Of course, we want to see our town survive, mayor, and we want our town to develop. The last six years, we have been in a stagnated environment with no growth, no development and no hope. In addition to that, we have been totally bull, bull-handed bull by this council and by the mayor. It's a shame that this council and the mayor have railroaded one of the biggest contributors of the National Western Scenic Highway. Now you want to claim ownership of, Harry? Come on. You know Jesse Palladini was the start of that and the driving force of that. And now you and Mike Fury and even Tony want to claim ownership of it? Wrong. You railroaded that poor woman out of town because she knew too much about you, Harry. And it's coming down around you. I am confirming the lack of compliance is a pattern with this, with our elected officials. It's not above the law. It's consistently that they act with disrespect and arrogance. The people have spoken and they've issued a mandate that they are done with this by electing a new slate for our town council. I agree with Steve. I'm not, I'm not asking for a resignation. But I do believe that the mayor and Mr. Shortway should do the right thing by Vernon and they should step down. The people have spoken. They have no confidence in either of you and it's time for you to relinquish your reign of terror and your reign of lack of fiduciary responsibility and give this town a chance to regrow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Saucy.
Francine, Francine Vince.
Ms. Vince?
Yes, hi. My name is Francine Vince and I live on Harborside Drive in Vernon Township. I'm speaking today in favor of the range safety ordinance. I understand that the ordinance was scheduled for a first reading at this meeting that was supposed to be on the eighth. Technical issues caused that meeting to be postponed today, but the first reading of the ordinance was pulled from the agenda. Over the past few years, as you heard Rick say, we've had a few homes in our neighborhood that have been struck by bullets that were originating from nearby unregulated private shooting ranges. My neighbors are in fear for the safety of the children who live in our neighborhood. They can't even play outside without fear of next bullet coming into the neighborhood. For the benefit of the council members and for the benefit of the public, I can't emphasize this point enough. This is a safety ordinance. It's not an anti-gun ordinance. There are currently no enforceable regulations that address the safety of private, non-commercial shooting ranges. If I was shooting at a private range, I would want to be 1,000% sure that my round would land safely. I can't imagine any shooter at a private range feeling confident, discharging a weapon and not knowing where that land, where that round will land and that it could land in a neighborhood where children are playing outside. Homeowners may be out there gardening, people are walking dogs. Neighbors are generally enjoying their outdoor spaces they should be able to do. So to that end, every resident in Vernon and everyone who shoots at private ranges should be in complete agreement on this one. We should all see this as a necessary and welcome safety measure to ensure that the residents can enjoy being outside in their own neighborhoods and private range shooters can shoot without fear of a negative or even tragic outcome. Thank you so much for this opportunity to make my comments in support of this important ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Vince. Next, Marcy.
Al Losco. Mr. Losco?
Mr. Losco, can you hear us?
I just, I just unmuted myself. Can you hear?
Yes, we can. Good evening, yes, we can.
Good evening. Yes, it's Al Losco from Seven Harborside. I'll be quick because I'm on my way home and my phone is going to die. But what I, what I just heard is absolutely right from Ms. Vince and Mr. Hoffman. I am deeply disappointed that the safety ordinance did not got tabled. I don't understand why. I mean, I, I, I was told there was so much opposition to it. I don't hear any. Who would up, who would be in opposition of, of safety of our citizens? To me, you know, it sounded like every council member, including and the mayor were, were in lockstep on this. And it should be something that should not wait another minute. You guys should look at this and it should be moving forward. Again, it's not anti-gun. This is a safety ordinance and everybody, whoever's anti-safety, I'd like to have a conversation with them. So with that, I thank you very much for your time and please, 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 for the safety of our neighborhood. Get this ordinance done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Losco.
I have Ed Speck.
Hello, Ed.
Can you unmute Mr. Speck?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Hi, thanks. I'm also a resident of the Glen Harbor community. I live on seventeen Lakeville Road. And I just wanted to also make sure my voice was heard about the. Ordinance for the gun safety range or safety for the gun range. I, I think it's really unconscionable that there's children in the neighborhood that play. All the time in the yard of one of the houses that was struck by a stray bullet. I guess they're lucky it was lodged in the garage door instead of, you know, injuring. Or worse to one of the kids. But, but it truly, it, it, it can't go on. It can't be allowed. Right now, you know, the gun range has been inactive, but when it was active. People weren't letting their kids to go out and play on Sunday afternoons because of, you know, fear for the safety. So I just wanted to add my voice to Al and Francine and, and Rick Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Speck.
I have Kristen Yumansky.
Ms. Yumansky?
Hello, good evening. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
I just wanted to chime in that I've been supportive of Mr. Stevens telling his story. Before the council this evening and that I have been, I can't speak to years prior to me coming. On board as a tax assessor, but I started in two thousand nineteen and we have worked really diligently and I think. Well together to make the corrections to the assessments that were warranted. And I know he did mention that in his. In, in his public comment, but I just wanted to make sure that his council and the town is aware. That I was in agreement that his assessments were too high. And so we've made the proper settlement in his tax court cases. And so there it has been improvement there with the township, working with a property owner. That's all I really wanted to say. Just make sure everyone understood.
Kristen, thank you and thank you for being so diligent with Mr. Stevens.
No problem.
I can, I can speak on behalf of the council that we really appreciate it and you, and you do a great job. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Have a good evening.
I have Ann Larson.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hope everyone's having a good day. I am calling actually, I'm, I'm glad that I stayed on this long. In opposition to the gun, the gun control changes proposed. I see that we've got bases loaded with four people from the same neighborhood calling. The whole rest of the town should also have input. I'm pretty sure that the Vernon police, the state police are able to handle any problems. It sounds like a terrible thing happened, but. You know, it's almost like a game of telephone. First, we heard it was two, it was two bullets into one house. Then we heard it's machine gunfire. Then we hear it's, oh no, it's all the time. Then we hear it's multiple homes. You know, stories have a way of, of, of just getting legs and getting bigger and bigger. In an effort to prove one's point. And that the fact is that. There are laws in place and we should enforce the laws that we have, period. We don't need a knee jerk reaction. By a part-time council. In fact, right now, a lame duck council. You know, putting their heavy, heavy hand on the scale of our gun rights. So that's one thing. And regarding the, the expenditures for things like the pump track and now we're talking about, you know. Other expansions and so forth. I have to say, I would encourage the incoming council to please put a. A spending cap on the council for any kind of discretionary spending. That we can just, you know, go along and, and do the fundraising and the management of funds for the daily running of the township. But any discretionary spending, why don't you put it on the ballot and see what the people really think? Before you go ahead with a head of steam thinking, oh, this is a great idea. Let's, 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 let's. And I just feel like your eyes glaze over with money. And the fact that, you know, the fact that this is real money that people are earning and contributing to the town is being overlooked in, in. And, and you know, whatever. I can't even get to the point I want to make, but. You gotta, you gotta slow down on the spending. It's just becoming crazy. Why don't we budget for things and plan in advance? Okay, we want to do something that costs three hundred thousand dollars. We budget a hundred thousand a year. And at the end of the third year, we purchase. Instead of everything's got to be now. We have to do it now and it's always an emergency. So that said, thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you.
On the other hand, I did receive an email today that I have to read.
Okay.
This is from Walter Marcego Junior, a forty-plus year resident of Vernon Township, fourteen-year law enforcement officer and twenty-plus year business owner. I write in once again in hopes to educate others of the extreme lawlessness, disrespect and shameful behavior of Mayor Burrell. Council President Harry Shortway, Business Administrator Chuck Volker, Construction Official Robert Westenberger. Zoning Official Allison LaRoca and Attorney Zalinski. I would like to add. I'm sorry. I would like to add a few statements on record. It is my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong. But wasn't Robert Westenberger of the Vernon Township Building Department terminated from his previous employment at St. Clair's Hospital? For ethics violations. I would tend to believe this since he was determined to be. The individual creeping around my property in the middle of the night taking pictures inside my bedroom windows. Who authorized him for overtime to stalk my residents? Or was he trespassing on my property during his personal time? Which would then present even more issues for him and the township. How is that you think I'm just going to dismiss this criminal behavior? This is how our mayor and council president run this beautiful township. I would also like to know if Robert Westenberger has been terminated from his current position for illegally withholding a TCO. And violating my civil rights as well as photograph, photographing my bedroom in the middle of the night. I would venture to say no, since the majority of you lack any support of ethics. As for you, Shortway, you and Volker should be removed from your position for attempting to attack my employment on numerous occasions. I am calling for Shortway's immediate resignation and vote of no confidence where he does not. Possess the ability or moral character to efficiently and properly govern this township. Shortway's recent attacks and blatant lies to my employer show his moral. Turpitude and lack of respect for this community. Shortway's dirty tactics give us a good understanding of how he attempts to govern the township. Right down to his ridiculous pump track fiasco. Shortway, your constant harassment. And retaliatory attacks on my job will no longer be tolerated. You are nothing more than a deceitful liar along with Robert Westenberger and Allison LaRoca. Who have submitted complete false accusations and will be held accountable for their actions. Anyone who thinks this is a personal unwarranted attack on Shortway and he's, and his administration. I welcome you at any time to review my extensive files that I currently have on this case. And you will see why a, why a majority of this administration should do the right thing and resign. Now for one final concern that I would like to address. Shortway. Is it correct that you have posted pictures on social media of excavation of the current pump track? Project. These pictures do not show any soil or sediment silt fencing. Also, is it my understanding that you are not in compliance with soil and sediment control plan? And furthermore, you did not seek approval prior to commencing excavation by disturbing the land. Now, isn't this ironic? Sounds very similar, sounds very similar to what your sloppy officials. Attempted to find me for, even though they were a hundred percent wrong. Also, did you apply for an LOI with the DEP since you are excavating so close to wetlands? If you're familiar with this, you can also reflect back to my file. This would be the same situation that you put me through applying for permits to build on my property. It is truly baffling how you think you are above the law. But then you attack honest residents for issues you know nothing about. The township needs to be held accountable for this.
Thank you, Marcy. Is there any more?
I do have Rick Hoffman again. Is that okay?
He already spoke.
Um, then I do not see any other hands.
Okay. Mr. Rizzuto.
I'm Pat Rizzuto, Lieutenant of the States. I listened with great interest on your discussion on the pump track and the trails. My position on it has always been very, very public and indifferent. Not because of what I believe is the benefit of it. But because I think it's just a bad use of township resources. For a demographic that really is too small, too narrow. My feeling has been that as long as we are using township funds. The necessity of coming up with a project where these funds are going to be committed. Should require at least a larger demographic than what I believe is going to be. Seen in this particular product. Now you continue to talk about. What it will bring. Are we supporting non-residents? Are we supporting those who are not living in Vernon? With this type of a project in the hopes that they're going to come in and require additional services? I question. What are we doing for a wider demographic? What are we doing for that forty plus? What are we doing for our senior citizens? I know that we give them the occasional dinner and the occasional picnic. But they've been in town for so long and paid continuing. Increases in taxes. And they've kept the faith in funding the educational system. Keeping the faith by paying their taxes when they're not putting anybody into the system. That's the way it's been done in the past. And until something better comes up. I suppose that's the way it's going to be done in the future. But I, I. I would ask respectfully that before you consider any additional expenditure of funds. On these two products, that you reconsider what you're doing. And if in fact, it goes forward and it's successful as you may hope to, to see. I'd probably be one of the first ones that said, you made a good decision, but I don't see that. I don't see this as becoming the magnet that you're looking. Because it's not a family oriented. A project. It's a project that is considered for a small group of people. As compared to what the total population of our community. Secondly, just a quick question. Spawn, this spawn ranch, have they done any pump tracks previously?
Really? I, I was out there Friday and I spoke to the workers.
They've done hundreds.
That's what they told. That's what they told. Thank you.
Mr. Rizzuto, I don't know. I think, did you see the, the drawings of what is anticipated with this? Isn't like an amphitheater, one of the things like a senior could enjoy? I know what you mean. They're bigger things. I agree with you.
The amphitheater, if I had to choose, it's not, oh, your excitement. It doesn't belong. And by the way, in my opinion, it should have been one of the premier projects that should have gone in first.
I think.
Why? Because that particular project. Would have benefited from six, five, up to eighty. What are we looking at now with a pump track? I'm not against the recreational aspect of it. But you have a limited dollar and yet you choose to spend that in a very small area. This probably could have been done better had it been funded by some private organizations. Private individuals rather than giving it money from a space, an open space fund. Which I, I, I question. And then the continued look to increase the townships. Purchasing of the board with the property is something that I, I, I just don't see. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzuto.
Eric, can I say one more thing to that?
Yeah, then Mr. Lynch, let them make their comments and they want to address Mr. Rizzuto.
It was voted on.
The referendum.
Right?
The referendum.
It was. I know that Ann Larson says something like, give it out to the people, but it was voted. By a majority to put the trail, to use the money for trail. But I definitely see what you're saying with the seniors. I agree a hundred percent.
I think that's. Open space funding was approved and that's specific to trails. That's, that's not true.
I thought it was.
It was trails, amphitheater, bike park, horse trails. Thirty percent of the money is what we asked and the council would decide project by project where the money was going to be spent. That's why I'm reciting it by memory and I haven't read it in probably two years, but that's what the referendum was about.
My name is Brian Lynch. I live in Barry Lakes. There's been a couple of things happened in the last three or four weeks that have come to my attention. One of them is the. Bullets entering the houses over in. The side of Vernon. We, from my own links, we always say the other side of Vernon because that's actually just like. But the other thing is, is as I was campaigning. People were complaining to me. About massage fall here in Vernon. What scared me more than anything. Was that. It was right, it was a lady had asked to put a sign in front of a store. She says it's right behind me and I see people coming and I see people coming and going all day long. I understand that the fire official had made inspections. I just want to know, are, where, where is the town when it comes to these establishments? Because if they get a stronghold and I've seen it happen in. Hudson County, I've seen it happen in New York County where one succeeds. And then there's five more within the next six weeks. These same places are right on Route twenty-three in West Melford right now too. I don't want Vernon to ever become something like that. And I'm sure that none of you do too. So where, where are we with enforcement with that? And also, who is the enforcement agent for all of the cannabis? And those stores within our town. I'm not asking this to stump anybody. And if you don't have an answer, I certainly understand, but if you do have an answer, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? It could be coming in the comments. I don't know.
I have. I'm sorry. I don't see any other hands up. Council President.
Seeing no one else decides to speak, can I have a motion to close the floor to the public?
Motion to close the floor to the public?
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Uh, let's go mayor's report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of the council, I have four different items that are part of our report tonight. Item one, while I have previously congratulated and welcomed our newly elected council member, Mr. Brian Lynch, Mr. Patrick Rizzuto and Mr. Natalie Cherry. Since this is the first council business meeting after the election, I take this opportunity to do so again. Not only have I congratulated and welcomed them uh, to the Vernon government team, I have also had the opportunity to meet with them. I've been with Stacy and more than open and frank exchange of ideas. I look forward to working with them as part of the five member council governing team. Council President Shortway and I have worked close together to take actions that we believe and that we hope will make these newly elected council members transition to the governing team as smooth as possible. Some of the specific administrative action that we've taken up to this point include ordering the newly elected council members municipal laptop computers and creating municipal email addresses to them in the municipal email system so that they will be able to officially communicate with other members of the governmental team and with members of the public as soon as they are officially sworn in. Number two, ordering the newly elected council members electronic key fob, which will enable them to have twenty-four seven access to the municipal center as soon as they are officially sworn in. Number three, providing the newly elected council members copies of the municipal houses ladies audit report. Number four, providing the newly elected council members a link to the item's draft technical analysis report. Give them the advanced opportunity to join with current council members to comment on this report before it's published, should they desire to do so. Number five, providing the newly elected council members personal copies of the agenda plus all backup information received by current council members for tonight's council meeting. This is a courtesy that will be maintained until they are officially sworn in. Number six, preserving them special seats at tonight's council meeting. And this also will be a, um, a courtesy that will be maintained until this one is. Number seven, ordering a new elected council members official meeting name tag that will be ready for their use to be officially sworn in on January third. And number eight, sending the newly elected council members personal invitations to the statutorily required public budget hearing. And I'll be hosting a municipal department heads on Friday, November the twelfth. The twenty-second, I'm sorry. As the council and I coordinate, uh, as it conclude that there are other actions that will legally, uh, that we can legally take to facilitate the newly elected council members transition to government team, we will do so. We have made tremendous progress towards achieving the objective of moving Vernon forward. And we want that progress to continue and we know that it can't unless we openly welcome our newly elected council member. Item two. I send out a special thanks to council member Tony Chili. Uh, and the seven other volunteers who helped her to start the project of applying the much needed stain to the three point two miles of fence at Maple Grange Park. Council member Chili has been trying to get this project started for the past couple of months. And with the help of volunteers, Matthew Antonini, Brian Miller, Kane Lynch, Colleen Miller, Riley Keen, Michelle Dinger, and Lane Chili, I hope that I didn't mispronounce the name. They were able to start this task in, in October. While the town supplied the stain and needed brushes, council member Chili and her team of volunteers supplied the time, they supplied the effort, and then supplied the pride. Thank you for your actions and effort to give life to the meaning of the slogan Vernon here. Item number three. I have repeatedly expressed pride to the Vernon Township Police Department. During the end of last month, I received more evidence to support my reasons for having this pride. The seventh is came in the form of a notification from the Office of the New Jersey Attorney General, which informed me that two Vernon police officers, Corporal William Terrell and Patrolman James Gale, had earned the award of New Jersey Police Officers of the Week. These two outstanding officers earned this prestigious award based on the bravery and professionalism that they demonstrated in their response to an incident in which a three-year-old girl was viciously attacked by a dog and also injured a young girl's parents. These officers' bravery and professionalism served the young, saved the young girl's life by acting quickly to control the dog and ensuring that the child received the urgent, urgently needed life-saving medical care. Thank you, officers Terrell and, and, and Gales. Vernon Township is in fact very proud. And finally, item number four. While moving forward means that we must focus on a host of things at the same time, this mayor and council have not forgotten that one of those key things is the cleanup of the major environmental scar that Joe Wallace has created on the face of our town in the form of his awful illegal landfill. And in that regard, as, as a result of close corporate, and the close cooperation and legal contact and other valuable resources of Municipal Attorney Zaleski has brought to our town by way of his close work with eight honorable, honorable, uh, James Rothschild, the court-appointed receiver of the Wallace property and B, the Office of New Jersey Attorney General. And number two, as a result of meetings and discussions that I personally had on behalf of the mayor and council with Governor Murphy, our Congressman Josh Guyhammer, and our state representative Steve Overhoe, all about the Wallace illegal landfill. As a result of these efforts, on November the third, council president Shortway, business administrator Volker, Municipal Attorney Zaleski, and I participated in a very productive Zoom conference meeting with New Jersey DEP Commissioner Sean Lotter, Lotteret, uh, New Jersey Deputy DEP Commissioner Sean Moriarty, and several of, of the New Jersey DEP staff members. Also included in that meeting was State Senator Steve Overhoe, members of his staff, representatives of the governor's office, and honorable James Rothschild, where we discussed this Wallace illegal landfill matter. The focus of this meeting was to discuss the availability of fund, funding to test and clean up the illegal Wallace landfill. During this meeting, we discussed possible funding programs that, that may be available to our township to test and remediate the Wallace landfill. The DEP Commissioner suggested that Vernon Township apply for a grant to the New Jersey DEP Analyst Discharge Site Mediation Fund, which provides rent money to municipality for mediation, for remediation and cleanup of qualifying sites. He advised that the New Jersey DEP would be provided to town with additional information and guidance regarding this bond application process. At this meeting, Senator Steve Overhoe questioned the governor's office as to whether it had access to any federal funding that could be used to test, uh, this illegal Wallace landfill. You know, I, I want to note that as a follow-up to this meeting, I received a call from Senator Overhoe who informed me that he had spoken to the governor's office and that the governor's office insisted to find a hundred thousand dollars to be used for deep soil testing of the illegal Wallace landfill. At the end of this week, we are hopeful of receiving word through Senator Overhoe as good for the governor's office to provide a front for this DEP test. I also want to note that both Congressman Guyhammer and Senator Overhoe have been strong advocates on behalf of Vernon Township. And they both have been very helpful in our efforts to obtain funding to test and clean up the Wallace landfill. On behalf of the residents of Vernon Township, offer my strong thanks to both of them. And the final, and the final update that I have on this matter at this time concerns the fact that the DEP Commissioner has informed me that the New Jersey DEP intends to file new applications to aggressively pursue, pursue additional remedies against Mr. Wallace. This mayor and council will continue our efforts to ensure that Vernon is not only a beautiful township little here, but also an environmental safe township. And we will continue to work our federally state representatives to move Vernon forward. That is my report for tonight, Mr. Council President and Council Members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go to council comments, John.
No comment.
Andrew?
I actually have two. First of all, I, I'd like again to wish the newly elected council members Brian Lynch, Natalie Bustery, and Patrick Rizzuto well in their future roles as town council. Uh, to my supporters and those who voted for me, thank you for your support and belief in my work. Thank you for all the citizens of Vernon for the opportunity to represent you on the town council and bring new visions and ideas moving Vern forward. During my term in office, we brought Vernon forward with a stronger financial backbone of over four million dollars in fund balance and the lowest debt in ten years. We've made for a safer community with new fire, ambulance equipment, and ordinances that help protect Vernon in the future. But now it's time to come together and work on moving Vernon forward as a more prosperous, healthy, and stronger community. So I urge all of us to unite, work together in a civil and professional manner so that we can show our future leaders a new example of working together truly is. Good luck to all in that area. In regards to the gun ordinance, um, I am one of the advocates of it. The objective of this ordinance was, it was written to be brought in for bringing safe communities initiatives to the residents of our community. This is truly a responsible firearm safety measure. Uh, firearm owners, the right to own and bear arms per the Second Amendment, I embrace that. We're not addressing Second Amendment issues here, but the safety of our communities. Adversely, our residents should not have to live in fear of a bullet striking their house. It may just be one or two bullets in the last two years, but all we need is one bullet to strike a child and it will be fatal and concerning for all. As I said, over the past two years, two stray bullets have struck residential properties in Glen Harbor Estates due to this target practice or what we call hobby ranges with firearms with no documented control safety standards. Rules or safety procedures in place. Our residents shouldn't have to herd their children inside when gun range activity is active in fear of a stray bullet coming into their neighborhood. This is not a third world country. We must provide some measurement of safety requirements on, on hobby ranges, on private property so for our neighborhoods to be safe. In the Glen Harbor area, within approximately one mile radius, there are three possible sites where firearm target practices have been taking place. None of them without documented controls or safety requirements are in place. One of them actually has made a very concerted effort to exceeding those requirements and I commend them. We've talked about this and it is a proactive approach to it. Whereas we have very well documented and safe ranges in Vernon. At Cherry Ridge is a very well organized and managed range that the public can enjoy safely. This facility is not only proactive, they live by safety first. They hold safety meetings every month, which are a requirement for membership and you must attend it if you're going to fire your weapon in a safe and controlled manner. Cherry Ridge is well, well documented and prioritizes safety as their first priority. I'm not looking to restrict firearm safety or practicing of, of this, of their skills, but I am asking for the safety of residents to have a sound, safe, and controlled precautions in places to cause harm or death. This was a proactive ordinance to avoid injury in the future. This is why I supported it and represent the proposed ordinance. The opposing sides, you, I do respect your thoughts and I do expect that we want to have that hobby available. This ordinance was pulled so that we can refine it better, take everybody's initiatives, and it needs work. And I hope that in the future, when the new town council comes in, please put a workshop together and develop this because it is about community safety, but getting, working together. Uh, as you've heard from our residents, it may not be in your neighborhood, but all it takes is one bullet. That's my comments on gun ordinances and hobby ranges. But again, for the residents of Glen Harbor Estates, I hope you stay safe. And I think the people who are in the area with their hobby ranges, they, they have also made aware that they're trying to do a better job of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Tony?
I agree with, I was hoping this ordinance would maybe not go through because there were some things that were wrong with it, but I definitely think something needs to be done. For two bullets to happen in one neighborhood, I, I think that's alarming and, um, to have children in front of the play is, is horrible. So I just want Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Losco, Mr. Fine and Mr. Speck, no, we, we are listening and I for one think something needs to be done. Again, I'm pro-gun. I'm, I just think for safety reasons, I agree with, and we need an ordinance or something has to be done to keep that community safe. Um, what else? Mr. Stevens, your story, I just can't even believe that happened to your family and they had a self-probably and that. I've heard too many stories and hopefully you all can help of people coming into this building to help, to get help and not receiving any. Oh, of what you said, like some of the things that you were told, if you don't like, it's terrible. It's terrible. And it's not the first person I've heard say something like that. So thanks, Kristen, for being such a good employee and working with me. And I think we need a lot more of that. And I, I think that's a lot of the problem in our town, to be honest. And I know Mr. Marseco comes across and says not nice things and I don't approve of what he said, but I think if someone would have just spoken to him in the very beginning, maybe this could have all. Maybe, I'm just, I, I've spoken to Mr. Marseco and he was very kind and very nice and showed me things. I just think we need as a community or as a municipality to be nicer to people. Um, I know that may sound very, I don't know, Pollyanna, but I do believe in that. Um, I want to go on record that I did not vote, and I did not vote yes to that ordinance that adopted retail cannabis. I think Ann Larson or someone said that. We all voted yes and I did not. Um, and lastly, massage parlor, I've asked about that. And I've gotten no answer. I, I think it's disgusting and I think it needs to be, I don't even know if those people are safe in that. If they're, from what I understand from talking to multiple people, I, I fear for the people that are actually working there. Again, I don't know for sure. It should be looked into. We don't know, but what is that, like a wellness check? Something, right? So I agree with you on that. And so that's, I think, I answered everyone that.
Is that it, Tom?
Oh, one last thing. Why are we paying to clean up, um, Joe Wallace's? Why, why isn't he paying?
George Rothschild, who are, is the, the receiver is probably, uh, they have not, they have not yet been able to find his funds. They have not been able to find his fund.
Wait, hold on one second.
Oh, I mean, but why is the government or why are?
The state of New Jersey has a very large surplus of funds due to the money the federal government has provided to the state of New Jersey, as well as all the other forty-one states. What the governor's office has suggested is that Vernon have some of those funds so that they can be tested for the loss. That, that's where the.
Oh, so testing, okay.
Protecting.
Protecting, okay.
And if there is funds available to remediate as well.
No, I. No, I.
To use those.
Okay, but we'll still go after hands to pay as well.
When you said we, I, I, I didn't think, you know, just said Mr. Town, but anybody, but anybody other than Wallace, that's what you were really saying, yes. Anybody, anybody other than. They attempted to compile his, to locate his funds. Uh, and they just have not been able to and I, I believe the attorney general's office is working.
Joe Wallace has been ordered to be incarcerated twice, but he can't be incarcerated because of COVID. Um, additionally, there, there's thousands of orders against Joe Wallace and what Joe Wallace is doing is. Instead of having people pay him, they have him pay his kids. I mean, the man refuses to comply with any aspect of the law. Um, it's made it very difficult to do anything.
You know, it's, it's, it's part of the cost of living and democracy. People with no scruples. People who don't care can get away with an awful lot and it, 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 it repulses a lot of us, but, um. I guess that's the system on which we live, but I have a tendency to think he will eventually get his due. I hope.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mike?
Thanks. Mayor, council member, incoming council member of all residents of Vernon. It's a great honor to be asked to be the member of the Vernon Township Council. Thank you all for your confidence in me and I promise you all, I will make every effort to listen to people's needs and do what is best for the township of Vernon. I want to address a trend in all politics that we recently, I've seen recently. It's become apparent that some believe that the freedom of speech gives them the right to come to public meetings and spread falsehoods and promote a negative view of our township. But I believe that everyone has the right to free speech and the ability to participate in all government activities. It does not give them the right to attack people personally and to spread untruths. If I am a member of this council, which I am now, I will not tolerate this behavior. I promise everyone, I will always give people the opportunity to ask honest questions and I always give them. Honest answers to the best of my ability. Most importantly, I would always choose love over hate. I pray that all of you hear these words and think before you speak. Thank you, Mayor and Council for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'd like to congratulate the council elect. So let me address some of the comments made. First for the gun ordinance. It was the Sunday before the last meeting that I received several calls. From different levels of elected officials. And I also talked to Cherry Ridge, I talked to residents. That people were going to make this a Second Amendment issue. I'm threatened with lawsuits. This is not a Second Amendment issue. I think I'm safe saying everyone on the council is a gun owner. And we support the Second Amendment. But the Second Amendment doesn't say protect your use of that weapon or that firearm. Just that you can own and you can bear arms, well-related regulated militia. This has nothing to do with Second Amendment. It also had, was never put in place to hurt Cherry Ridge, which is a well-organized and safety-minded organization. However, what people don't realize. There is no state certifications or licensing of fire ranges at all. It's also not a protected fight-to-farm act activity to target you. We have to have due diligence when we go forward with this. We all hear what a bullet can do. I've seen what bullets do to people accidentally, intentionally. Trust me, I know the dangers that's out there. But we have to do this right. And I hope the next council president calls for a workshop and we work diligently on the ordinance because we have to get it right. We can find no other ordinance in the state. That regulates gun ranges. Either they prohibit them, the outside shooting firearms, and we don't want to do that because we're hunting, we have legitimate farming activities. We have Cherry Ridge. And in some areas, some people could have a legitimate range with the right embankments and buffer zones, natural or man-made. It has to be done right. We can't afford not to get it right and get bogged down in litigation. And we have to do it pretty much expedited because it is a, a present danger. Now, we did a study at the police department through the mayor, did a study, there's been 11 errant rounds in 10 years. But one is too many. The police department, there is no law that regulates it. And anybody wants to show me the, this statute, let me know. Because you're going to have to show knowingly, purposely, or recklessly that round went through. There's nothing that says carelessly. And it can't be done with harassment because you have to show a series of acts that are illegal. And it's nothing illegal for a farmer, so I'll use that example, to fire around if it goes into somebody's neighborhood. What are you going to charge them with? There's no law. There's civil penalties when you can't get somebody criminally, somebody would file civil. So this is why this needs a lot of work to get it right. Because a lot of organizations, other communities will look at this. They tried these laws, range laws in the past in this county, they all went down right away. For whatever reasons, whether the elected officials just tabled them, I took it off the agenda because I want to get it right. It's going to take some time, even though I know we want it done quickly. It's going to have to be up to the next council because it's going to take that long at least to get it done right. Regarding the marijuana situation, the gifting, it's a loophole. Again, people say there's laws, what laws? What law are they violating? Right now, if a police officer uses the smell of burning marijuana. As probable cause, he can be charged. That's how restrictive laws are. Remember, a lot of our laws protect the citizens, the whole constitution, the amendments protect the citizens. So they just can't go in there and start searching. They need fourth degree. It's going to have to be done through either the IRS or the Treasury Department, the DCA, Division of Community Affairs. Something's going to have to go from the state level. The township has no jurisdiction. Our police department has absolutely no jurisdiction on this. So there's nothing we can do about it. We have to look above and we, we've all asked for help on this. It's not just our community, it's going on all over. This organization has other stores in other communities. As far as massage parlors, when I was mayor, I heard this whole thing. I went to the police department. That's where it ends. They go to the prosecutor's office. You can't go back what's going on because I've been part of many, many undercover operations. And when you see these go down, it's because of a long time undercover. It's a, it's a need-to-know basis. So we can only lodge a complaint and leave it up to law enforcement. And usually that's going to go to a higher level, whether it's the prosecutor's office or attorney general's office. You also can't walk in there without a warrant. What are you going to search? You need to describe the location, what you're going to search for, and it's got to be based on probable cause. So it's just not like, hey, we're closing you up. We had the fire inspectors go, whatever we could do through zoning, fire prevention, we did. But that's where it ends. And when we talk about human trafficking, we don't have the resources here to do it. You've got to talk state, federal level. And we don't have the jurisdiction. These are lengthy investigations that require undercover and you never follow up with a question, what's going on? Because you cannot jeopardize those undercover. I know the frustrations. I live here too. I live by this and I enforce different laws. There's nothing at this point we can do as a council. Or even the mayor, who's the executive.
Absolutely.
It has to fall on the other levels of investigation. I'm not even going to ask after I lodge a complaint, is it being investigated? Because I'm not going to jeopardize the safety or the outcome of an investigation. There's no further need for me to know. I know the public wants to know what's going on. It's for safety, you can't be told what's going on, or even if there is an investigation. So I hope you respect that. We're aware of it and we just didn't sit on this because we think it's okay. Uh, again, I want to just relate to what, um, the mayor said about our meeting with Senator Orho and the other parties, very, very successful. The spill fund in New Jersey is practically dried up. The DEP wasn't getting involved right away because you've got to show an immediate threat. Immediate hazard. You can't do that. Then they can release funds to stop or do the testing. So we had to find out money, where we find money. We investigated, could the art money be used and then we recover it, we could locate Mr. Wallace's funds. But Senator Orho immediately, he was either that evening after the meeting or the following day contacted the governor's office and actually met with the chief of staff. And the governor has pledged, they are going to do it and look for that money for us. And mayor, you kind of already confirmed Senator Orho has been successful.
Senator Orho has, yeah, I mean, he, he, he's just given us more than lip service. He has literally carried water for us.
Yes.
I mean, I have so much respect for him and, uh, if anybody can do it, he will. And so he's committed to doing it, to helping us out.
He absolutely understands this. Um, I've even had discussions with him on the firearm. Uh, you know, Steve, Senator Orho's family grew up in West Milford and years ago, we had the tragedy of a bullet went across a lake. Went through an outer wall, struck the woman taking a shower, went through her and hit her husband who was. Doing Mother Nature. She died, he survived. So there is a real danger here when the discharge of firearm is not done and safe, but the point being Senator Orho isn't giving us lip service as the mayor says. He's out there, he's making the phone calls, he's making the meetings to help us out here. And he respects the Second Amendment. He's absolutely pro-Second Amendment. And again, mayor, thank you for, uh, recognizing our police officers. They did a great job and the corporal here was one of the ones recognized by the attorney general's office. Uh, he had left and now, now we have another corporal here, but, uh, they did a great job. And they made the right decisions, getting help there. You had people bleeding out there and they had a dog that had the potential of killing other people. These guys did an outstanding, outstanding job. Um, I was saving these comments pre-Veterans Day, but it has come past, but we must always remember the sacrifices that our veterans make. Not only on the 11th day of the 11th month at the 11 hour, hour, but this should be a daily. Thank you for them. Well, we have these rights and we have these protections, right? We're talking about amendments tonight and all this and they're the ones we are free. They sign away their rights when they go in the military. They don't have all the rights you and I have. They sign them away to protect our rights and they should receive our gratitude day in and day out. And I think President John F. Kennedy said himself, a veteran who most of you know was, was wounded in World War II. As we express our gratitude, we must never forget the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them. So really, I, we all know veterans, some of you may be veterans in here, so let's always honor our veterans. Uh, with that being said.
Mr. Council President, let me just, this is being real complex, but let, let me just say, uh. Retail sale cannabis ordinance that we passed. What's happening with this store and thousands of a store across the state of New Jersey has nothing to do with legal cannabis. The retail cannabis ordinance that we passed only permits. An individual who gets a license from the state to be able to use that license here in Vernon. And someone said that, uh, we have a bad ordinance and now we've got somebody grandfathered. This person's not grandfathered into anything. This has nothing at all to do with legal cannabis. Zero.
Mayor, what about if you're so close to that, the Ironman's park right there? Can you close them down for that? Right, that, the, that's.
It's not an official park either. It's private property.
No, you can't be 2,000 feet.
Not in the recreational.
No, it is. No, it is. It's 2,000.
The real, the real loophole here is that these people are gifted this and I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's the thing.
All right. So anyway, say that, but no, we just don't apologize. I'm glad you brought it up. That's all I have to say tonight. I, I hit some of the, uh, your questions that you have. May I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Right, thank you, everyone. Let me ask Marcy, please. I think I got. Okay, man, John, you, I think you guys.
No, no, I thought that was good. That was actually, it worked out real well, in my opinion.